Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 12th Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with a moment of silence. And I think we have a few today. I have one that I'll read. Shirley Howland passed away peacefully at the age of 94. She was a remarkable woman, a fierce Democrat, a 1950 UC Berkeley graduate, a trailblazer, and a wonderful friend to so many who called Clear Lake home for many years. She lived a full life, participating with amazing energy in all she took on, especially in needling Democratic politicians to be more progressive. She especially loved Dennis Kucinich and later Hillary, and stood firmly for peace and against climate change, drove her Prius covered in the most liberal bumper stickers all over the county, and set up voter registration tables at every event she could find. She never gave up the fight until yesterday, when she graciously left life. That was on Friday. She was not alone when she went, and she counted on her posse, a few faithful friends during her final moments. She will be sorely missed. In her honor, let's try to model her courage and perseverance. A memorial event is being planned in the near future, and we will forward details. And then, as we all know, today is the eighth anniversary of the Valley Fire, which changed our lives forever. There were four lives lost that day. One of them was my neighbor. We had four injured firefighters. Seventy-six thousand acres burned and 1,955 structures lost. At that time, it was the third most destructive fire in California history, but so many fires have already eclipsed that. But it really was the beginning of this new era of megafires. And so many lives have not come back together. People are still recovering, people are still hurting, and the trauma has been felt all around the county and all around the state. So I know we've got another moment of silence. Do you want to step up?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and to the public here. And I stand before you to conduct this moment of silence also for two Upper Lake residents who were from Upper Lake area. And the names are Melinda Sue Easter Wright and Catherine Marie Perry, both of Upper Lake. Fine women and very friendly, and they passed. Kathy passed away unfortunately on August 19th, 2023. And Ms. Melinda Wright unfortunately passed away during the Labor Day holiday on Saturday, September 2nd, 2023. And I would like to extend my condolences to the grandchildren of Melinda Wright, of Madison Wright, Haley Wright, her son Matthew Wright, and her beloved husband Jim Wright. And then for Kathy Perry, her daughter, her one and only daughter, I believe, is Ms. Kelly Strong. So I want to take that moment of silence to recognize them and offer their condolences to their families and their loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Another thing to add about to Melinda is that she was on the West Region Town Hall as well. Yeah, so.
Okay. Do we have any more moments of silence? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Of course, yesterday was the anniversary of 9/11, so we remember all those who perished, including the brave firefighters and police officers. And I also want to acknowledge our local Lake County firefighters who commemorated that day by climbing the stairs here at this courthouse 28 times, up and down the four flights, to equal the 110 flights of the World Trade Centers. Seeing them run that and come out of the courthouse exhausted and then ring a bell in commemoration of their fallen comrades was very touching, and I'm glad I was there to see it.
We have our probation officers lead us in the pledge today. Okay, we will move on to our... Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any extra items to consider?
We do not.
Okay. Then we will move on to the approval of our consent agenda. We have a lot of items that we need to pull. I have a list here. 5.25, 5.33, 5.34, 5.38, 5.9. And do we have any others?
Can you repeat those slowly so I don't repeat what you asked? 41. In addition to those.
Madam Chair, I hate to do this, but I will pull 5.14 as well.
Does the public have any items to pull? You have items to pull off the consent agenda? Anyone in the Zoom room have items to pull off the consent agenda?
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. Thank you, Matthew. All right. Well, who wants to take a stab at this?
Let's see. All right, Madam Chair. Oops, sorry. Madam Chair, with the exception of 5.10, 5.11, 5.13, 5.14, 5.15...
Did you say 5.14, too?
Yes.
Okay.
5.25, 5.33, 5.34, 5.38, 5.40, and 5.41.
Including 5.39 and 2.5.
And 2...
Sorry, 2.6.
2.6.
5.39 and 5.39 and 5.26. I think I said that one, but I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We didn't really designate which ones will be pulled for next week. 5.3, 5.9, 5.34 will be for next week. Okay.
But which ones are those? 5.33 and 5.34?
Sorry, Lloyd, what? Okay. 38, 39, 34 will be... They're related to the budget, and so they'll be next week. The rest of them will work on today. Yeah?
Not 5.25?
We probably... We will not work on 5.25. That'll be to a later date.
Oh, right, later date. Okay. Okay, 906 item is our public input item, 6.1. And we have a form from Virginia Bautista. If you'd like to come up... Oh, shoot, I don't have my... Three minutes. You said it when she started. Yeah, just state your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Virginia Bautista. I'm here to speak about the cat overpopulation. It's drastically... It's dramatic how it's grown. And we don't have a spay and neuter clinic. For example, I've been doing and been performing this service for my community for 15 years, taking cats and kitties out of the county to get them spayed and neutered. I have a full-time job, but I do this at the side. Take them out of the county. Why? Because we don't have spay and neuter clinics. We have our Lake County... Lakeport Animal Control, which only give us one appointment per month. SPCA, three times per year. How we can help? How can we help to have a spay, neuter, affordable clinic in our Lakeport... in our Lake County? Every... It's not all about being irresponsible pet owners. It's not. It's because our county is charging ridiculous amount of money to spay a cat or a dog. We have to help these cats and dogs. We have to help our animals. We have to help our residents to be able to afford these prices. Okay, right now, we're not going to get any appointments for in Lakeport in our SPCA. You know why? Because there is no more funds supposedly. Okay, so our animals are going to be dying there. A lot of animals are not feral, are not abandoned. It's because owners left them behind when they moved away. They moved to another house and they left them behind. Okay, so those cats converted... They get converted to be ferals or community cats, dying. We're going to be in our houses really nice and warm. Wow, those animals, those cats and dogs are dying out in the street. Dr. Richard Beckman died last year on March 2020. We haven't been able to hire a veterinary doctor. Can our board helps and make this happen to have our community cat problem back? Can we help the residents? Maybe we can... The county can add a payment or a fee into our property taxes? Out of mind to make a payment annually? Let's have all the county residents to make a payment into it annually, to make... to help our SPCA and to help our animal control. We need a solution. We can just turn around and pretend that nothing is happening? A lot of animals, even if you like it or not, animals, is going to be beneficiary for all of us.
That's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm going to just... One minute, I'm going to grab my...
Hi, my name is Elaine Brown, and I'm an educator. And as an educator, we often front-load information before the test and before we teach. So I just want to let you know, on September 27th, you may be the ones that started this. There's going to be a talk on homeless at the SOBE. I'm not familiar with that theater. I'm not... I don't have the time, but I really am front-loading some information, and I hope all of you attend. At that time, more can be said. But our homeless shelter in town really needs some help. I was there for two hours and couldn't stay the whole length of the time because of the condition of the room that I was in. My former husband was a correctional officer at San Quentin, and I got to, back in the early '90s, walk into that place, and I can tell you by far, the prison was much better off than that homeless shelter. That said, you know, I've heard that there was $38,000 from a reputable person in this community that was taken out of that homeless shelter by someone who no longer works there. And that's a lot of money. It's possibly $48,000. That'll probably be brought up. This is just to give you a front-loading of information that might come forward. There's a place in Santa Rosa called The Living Room for Women and Children. Perhaps we need a women and children place in town that's overnight as well, because that one doesn't have overnight. But I walked in there the other day to visit someone, and there was a movie on TV that had blood in it, and I've been told that a lot of words are spoken there that children probably shouldn't hear. So that's another concern. Again, the 27th, and I would like to say on the 27th, I know California enacted something right before COVID where people could go into a place of employment, something like a store, and take $900 merchandise and only get a misdemeanor. If the county can somehow, like the federal and the state are different, if we can somehow protect our merchants here, that that wouldn't happen. I don't know if we can override what that ordinance. I don't know how that works. I'm just... We, the people, telling you. And also, I was up in... Recently, this weekend, on the dam up at Pillsbury, I heard they're going to, like, just not let it happen, and the water's all going to run out. And I talked to a lady named Edie up there who has a store. I haven't had the ability to research it, but they just spent $4 million on the dam last year, and now they're going to get rid of it, and PG&E doesn't want to take up... I haven't researched this. One of the turbines, they don't want to fix it, but that really affects this community and the wineries and everyone. So I just want you to look into that, and thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hansen?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name's Michael Hansen, and I just recently took a ride up and over the hill from Upper Lakes over to Lake Pillsbury, and I'm noticing there's a logging operation going on. But they have these big piles of, I'm assuming, burn piles like they do in wineries. But I noticed that they're wrapped in viscqueen, a black tarp. Are these used to set these fires, or what are these being used for? And that's a concern for me, because, you know, we have enough pollution in our airs and waterways and our poor animals out there, and I believe this is something that should be addressed, not only by this county, but by the state of California. I'm assuming that they're using these black tarps to start these fires as an accelerant, but that is black plastic, and it's just polluting our air and waterways, and it's a concern for me, as well as many others in this planet. So I'm wondering what can be done for this. And that's about all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And just to add to that, that wood could be used for people that are in poverty, or even people that want to go up there and get wood. It's usable. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, during public comment, it's... We're not allowed to have a conversation about this, but you can speak with the supervisor. It sounds like you're probably up in the Mendocino National Forest, which is governed by the National Forest Service.
Thank you.
Okay, our 6.2, 907 a.m. item, Pet of the Week. I think we have a cat. Did Steven find a new cat?
Good morning. My name is Officer Copus with Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today, I have brought Hazel. She's a two-year-old female. She has been recently fixed as a community cat, and we picked her up as a hit-by-car cat. So she had a broken... It was a part of a pelvis that was broken, but she has a full recovery. She's ready for a new home. She loves puppies, dogs, cats, kittens, kids, everybody in general. She's super sweet, and she could be a really good house pet.
Hazel? Is that her name?
Yeah, Hazel.
Aw. Well, thank you for bringing her in.
Thank you.
Good luck, Hazel. Okay, our 6.3, 908 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. We have Supervisor Crandall.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
We brought all our friends today.
Good.
So I'm going to read this proclamation, designating the month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. Recovery is near and dear to me, as a lot of my family has had struggles with addiction, substance abuse, and all of those, and I know a lot of us are affected by that as well. And so it is always a blessing when somebody actually goes through the process and comes out of it. And we do know that sometimes it takes multiple attempts, and that's fine. You know, eventually, it will happen, and then our prayers will answer, right? So I'll go from there, and we'll start with this proclamation. Whereas Recovery Month recognizes the strong and proud recovery community, the dedication of service providers and community members in Lake County who assist and support individuals from prevention services to recovery. And whereas Lake County Behavioral Health Services provides or provided substance use disorder services to 208 beneficiaries, Hilltop Recovery Services provided 261 residential treatment beds and 55 outpatient services. Redwood Community Services, Tulie House, provided residential treatment services to 65 women and 33 children. Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, and Fran's House, Sober Living Environment, SLE, provided combined safe housing to 49 men and women and 12 children in the calendar year 2022. And whereas, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided mental health services to 1,153 individuals during the calendar year 2022. And whereas, nationally, 24 million in the U.S. experience a substance use disorder, while 9.5 million experience both substance use disorder and mental health disorders. And whereas, seven in 10 adults who have substance use disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery, and two in three adults who have mental health disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery. And whereas, through promotion of Recovery Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent those problems today. And whereas, recovery is possible and treatment is effective, people in recovery can and do become gainfully employed, own homes, and rejoin their families and their communities. Whereas, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Services, Substance Use Disorder Services, Mental Health Services, Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, Safe RX, Hope Rising, and Lake County Health Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare, education systems in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding, and action to address substance use disorder and mental health conditions in our community. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services, due hereby proclaim that September 2023 is National Recovery Month in the County of Lake, passed and adopted this 12th day of September 2023. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Paeska.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I just... I'm just going to speak very briefly, but we're all very much aware that substance use disorder is pervasive in our county, and we have a lot of work to do as a community. But just as important as providing services and healthy alternatives to help people recover, it's also important to take a moment to pause and acknowledge those who have made the journey and who are successful, productive members of society. The recovery community is strong, and I just want to honor those who continue to be a beacon of hope for others yet to come to the other side and be a part of that recovery community. And also, all of... If you look behind me, you see a diverse group of individuals who are all very much present and active in the community and assisting those with substance use disorders, who also continue to be a beacon of hope. Thank you for all that you do. Would anybody else like to say anything?
Laura Sullivan with Redwood Community Services, Tulie House, and just thank you for taking this time to reflect, to offer that hope. All of us standing here are proof of the journey, but so are the millions of Americans out there who do recover. So it's a blessing to watch families come into Tulie House, change their lives, and watch moms go on to be moms and change that generation, the next generation. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bonnie O'Donnell, and I just wanted to share with you all that we are having an event this Saturday. It is Recovery Happens, and it will be at the Lakeport Park, at Library Park, and it will be from 11 to 3:00. So if you're interested, please come join us. There's going to be speakers. There's going to be booths, activity booths for kids and families, and then there's also going to be informational booths for everybody in regards to what kind of recovery services we have here in our community. So we'd love to see you and join us, and there's also going to be a walk. We're going to do a Walk for Recovery around and about Library Park. So thank you.
Thank you for having us here. My name is Richard Okino. I think that it's important also to acknowledge on this day that whoever out there watching this, either on Zoom or here, that there's a lot of stigma attacks to addiction, and I want to let everybody know that everybody... There's a large majority of people on this panel that have went through addiction themselves. And we were literally that person that you see out there, walking around, looking like they're zombies. And if it wasn't for people in this room, I'm sitting on Board of Supervisors, people that we... that loved us and gave us hope, we may have never been able to claw our way out of that dark, dark hole that we were in. So I want to take this moment to ensure you that if you don't understand addiction, you don't understand people, why they're doing the things that they're doing. They're not making that decision on their own. I would encourage you, highly encourage you, to gain a bit of brain knowledge, addiction science, so you could better understand your community members, because they're just really... They're one person away from encouraging them to change their life. And there's a couple of people on this panel that, you know what I mean, are going to get master's degrees, and if you would have looked at them 15 years ago, you would have never thought that that person would amount to anything in their life. So I want one thing... One thing I want everybody to take away from this is that that person out there that you might be stigmatizing or think shaming, they might have a cure to cancer one day. They might have the ability to do something great in this world, and by you just acknowledging them or talking to them one day or giving them hope, reassuring them that there's a better life out there, you don't know how long that... You don't know how far that would go in that person's mentality and their outlook in life. I promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate what you said, because a lot of times, we do notice these folks, especially in our county, we have a lot of people addicted, and it starts with something inside that they're hurting from or something they're dealing with, or something that they have that they're not medicating. So they self-medicate, and eventually, the hook sinks in, and then they're just basically living to supply that. It's like a parasite, this substance, and this is what happens. And they'll use every brain, every, you know, sort of intelligence that they can to get that substance. And I know that, because I've seen relatives that will figure out every single scheme to get the resource to get that. I'm like, man, if they just put that towards, you know... And I'm like, man, if they just put that towards, you know, so you're right on that. I appreciate you saying that. So there's anyone else that wants to speak, or?
I'm Lori from Hilltop Recovery Services, and I just want to support what Richie was saying, because I am myself an addict. I've been in recovery for 26 years. I have, in this community, we have firefighters, LCSWs, we have business owners, they are all graduates of our facility, and some of them started at Lake County Behavioral Health, some of them were shared clients with Tulie House. We've done this together as a community, and, and we do recover. So thank you for supporting us.
All right. And I, and I got to say this, I'll be eight years in recovery for alcohol. It was my choice to destroy myself back in the day, so.
I'm going to open it up for the public before we all step away. Is there anyone in the public that would like to give comment on this item, either in the chambers or the Zoom room?
No hands raised in Zoom, Chair Paeska. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the work that you do, and thank you Supervisor Crandall. 6.4, our 9:09 a.m. item presentation of proclamation designating the 31st day of August as International Overdose Awareness Day. Supervisor Simon.
Anyone want to come on back up?
Isn't it the same group?
Just set out. I've never seen a dog. My grandkids would love that. What's his name? Yeah. Okay. Proclamation designating the 31st day of August as International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global event held annually on the 31st of August to honor loved ones' loss to fatal overdose. Whereas in 2022, 79 people overdosed in Lake County, the highest fatal overdose rate in the state of California. Whereas all overdose deaths are preventable. Whereas addiction is a chronic, relapsing, and treatable disease that should not be conflated with moral or personal failure, yet continues to be the subject of stigma and marginalization. Whereas every person should have access to resources that prevent overdose, including naloxone, Narcan, syringe exchange, drug testing, and medication-assisted treatment. Whereas in Lake County, dedicated prescribers of medication-assisted treatment, harm reduction providers, and substance use recovery programs work tirelessly to provide residents with these resources. Whereas local communities play a crucial role in reducing stigma, including residents, elected officials, parents, private and public organizations, hospitals, law enforcement, first responders, schools, and colleges. Whereas SafeRx, Lake County, an overdose prevention coalition comprised of local agencies and organizations, including Lake County Behavioral Health, Lake County Health Services, hosted the third annual commemorative commemoration of International Overdose Awareness Day in Austin Park on Saturday, August 19th. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate August 31st as International Overdose Awareness Day and urges Lake County citizens to join in this important observance, passed and adopted this 12th day of September 2023. Go ahead and ask anyone who wants to step up and speak.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't have my statistics right in front of me. My name is Sarah. I am an AmeriCorps Vista member, working with SafeRx Lake County. Thank you for having me today, and I just wanted to say that overdose continues to be a major cause of mortality here in Lake County and in the U.S. But there are steps we can take to reduce overdose deaths here in Lake County. For example, SafeRx is offering free naloxone or Narcan to anyone who wants it, so please feel free to reach out if you would like a kit. We'll also be at the Recovery Happens event this Saturday with lots of naloxone kits. These are incredibly helpful, and in the first quarter of 2023 alone, these kits specific, or naloxone specifically helped to reverse over 20 overdoses here in Lake County. And in 2022, that was nearly 50 people who did not pass away from overdose thanks to naloxone. So these interventions, as well as harm reduction and syringe exchange, as well as access to medication-assisted treatment, buprenorphine, are incredibly crucial to preventing overdose, and SafeRx Lake County looks forward to continuing to promote these, these interventions. Thank you.
Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. In 2004, I was resuscitated from an overdose. I didn't know I was taking opioid, and so unfortunately, that's become much, much more prevalent. So I just hope the community is aware that it's almost impossible to be too young to talk about opioid overdose, because it's out there, it's available. Fentanyl has really changed the game. I'm glad, I'm very grateful that I didn't grow up in a world where fentanyl existed. It is so dangerous for our kids. And so I also want to put a face to these experiences. I am standing, and I'm very happy that I was resuscitated and, and continue to contribute to the community and have a beautiful family, but a lot of people don't get that opportunity. And so I just appreciate the staff that do this, not for the love of the work, not love of the money, nobody does this for money. And so we're out here every day, literally saving lives, and the impacts are felt today. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right. Excellent. I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that's done. You know, at the most critical point in someone's life, when they're, when they've overdosed or, you know, they need to use the Narcan as it brings it back, and it affects every family, you know, at least as far as I know. It's affected my family a couple of times this year, and I had a family member that, you know, is in the life, hasn't decided to get the help that is needed, but was resuscitated by Narcan. So understanding that, you know, you never know when it's going to happen, or it could happen, please, as you said, if you, naloxone or the Narcan, make sure you have it, get the training, because you never know when it may come into play. And at the most critical moments, as a family member or a friend, you know, encouraging those individuals to make the decisions to reach out and to get help are the most important thing, because that might be the opportunity that they need after something like this. So I just say, it affects every family, every community, and we need to just keep working, and I want to thank all you warders for keeping, doing this here in Lake County, because it is critical right now in our times. So thank you very much. That's all that I can say.
Do we have any public? Do we have any public comment? Anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room? I'm not seeing any hands up, but I want to give that opportunity. Supervisor Spatier?
So I just want to highlight, I did request some numbers from our coroners, from our sheriff, and the numbers are slightly different, but close to the same. Here it says 69 instead of 79 for overdose, but the next highest death, other than through natural causes, was 27, and that was from COVID. That's a drastic difference for the number two death outside of natural causes. And so far this year, we're either at 29 or 27, and that was numbers through May, and that's 27. Those are things we can change, those are things that you're all working to change, and I'll make a request a little bit later for an item that I pulled from the consent agenda, apologize. But we're spending a lot of money, we're seeing a lot of contracts, we're seeing the numbers either getting worse or continuing to be the same. I'd like to be more knowledgeable on what we're doing, what's really working, what's not working, what's our strategic plan, because I'm not aware of the big picture of how we're doing everything, what, everything we do, how it plays a part in helping. And so I hope that we can engage in deeper conversations, rather than just contract conversations, because I think we need to better understand how we can all work together, rather than depending and looking at behavioral health to make the change, or the nonprofits we contract with to make the change. It's going to take a community to make this change, and this is something we can change. And so I just hope that we can get into some deeper conversations about it, because this is important. It's a number that is absurdly high in comparison to our other causes of death, so we got to make a difference. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Ready for a picture? So we're going to take a short break. I think we lost our video at some point in there.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
It'll probably be closer to 15 minutes.
15 minutes, so we'll come back around at 10 o'clock. Thanks. Okay, welcome back. Thanks for hanging with us. We had a little technical difficulty. So our next item is 6.4, 9:09 a.m. presentation, oh, I'm sorry, 6.5, 9:15 a.m. Public Hearing, Consideration for the Final Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2023-24 for the County of Lake and Special Districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. And we will be, I'll open this item, but we're going to be continuing it till next week. Do we have any comments? Anything from the public? Okay. Then I'll close this, and we'll come back to it next week. We can dig into some of our consent items that have been pulled, and why don't we just go and hit all the behavioral health items? Since you're here, why don't you come on up, and we'll go through, yes, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, if I may, for item 6.5, since it is a public hearing, the suggestion would be to, well, at this point, to reopen 6.5, a motion to reopen 6.5, and to have it, to have a motion to continue the public hearing to a date in time certain.
Okay, I'm going to reopen 6.5, 9:15 a.m. Public Hearing, Consideration of the Final Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2023-24 for the County of Lake and Special Districts governed by the Board of Supervisors.
And it would be by motion?
I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair, for reopening item 6.5.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It's reopened.
Madam Chair, I move to continue item 6.5 to Tuesday, September 19th.
10 a.m.
At 10 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now come on up. We will start with 5:10, and we'll just move through all of the behavioral health items.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
May I recommend at the 5:14 or the sunrise?
Which one is that? Is 5:14 continued?
5:14, can you continue that till after, we'll bring that back after lunch. There were people here that wished to be there, but they left, because they thought it wouldn't be until after lunch.
Okay. Okay. 5.10, Adopt Resolution Authorizing the Standard Agreement between the County of Lake and the Department of Healthcare Services for Drug Medical Services for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027, and authorizing the Behavioral Health, Health Chair, Behavioral Health Director to sign the standard agreement and the Contractor Certification Clause. And this was pulled by Supervisor Spatier.
Thank you for this. So I thought this was obviously something that we need to do. We have to have a agreement between ourselves and the state for the reimbursements for the services we provide, but this is a large number, and I just don't want it to go through without having a conversation about what we're looking at. We're looking at about $33 million worth of services per year, and one of the reasons I bring it up is we, I've been keeping track since 2019 on all the contracts that we see. This doesn't account for contracts that are less than $25,000, that do not come to the Board of Supervisors for approval, and approximately our 2019-20 total for contracts was $6 million, approximately for 2020 was $8 million, 2122 was $10 million, 2223 was $21 million, and we continually increase. And as I stated in the previous conversation, I feel we need to be more embedded in the conversation than just say yes, approve contracts, and wait to see what happens, because there are many factors to why we're not doing great. Everybody in the state is not doing great. We're seeing homelessness continue to rise, we're seeing addiction use continue to rise. COVID did not help whatsoever in that situation. I know we had a 400% increase, we were told about, in the number of calls, but I just think that with the number of deaths we're seeing, with the impact to our communities, that we need to take a more front row seat in this conversation of what's happening. I'm not going to say no today, but I'm seeing this, these numbers climb very, very high. I'm not certain what our return on investments are. That's something I've been trying to capture as much as possible, but I know we continue to see our, our communities struggling, and I just want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to support the outcomes that we're all looking for, to get out of all of this. And again, we're looking now, last number I gave you was 2223, where I have $21 million. We're looking to bring it up to $33 million a year. I just want to make sure we're not just spending money, we're also engaged with everything that we can to make sure that the outcomes are the best that we can get. And so I just wanted to pull this to make a comment, and I hope that we can maybe have quarterly reports or every six-month reports, but we can't have 70 to 80 people dying from something that we can make changes on and, and wait annually for our MHSA report, or annually for other reports. Yes, we're engaged in individual ways, but I think we need the board to be engaged, because individually, we can't change the direction that we're on.
Well, I think this is, I think a way to look at it and frame it is, we're not just spending money, we're making the investment to make these changes, and there is going to be a lag. It takes a long time to make these changes, and I'll just pass it over to Director Jones to speak on that.
Sure. Didn't hear a specific question in there, but I can give some general feedback that might help contextualize this. So I will start out by saying that the behavioral health system has been underfunded forever. Okay? When they closed the state hospitals in the 80s, we have not recovered as a state or a nation from that, because it pulled out a significant resource from very underserved individuals, and of course, the Mental Health Services Act was intended to rectify that and to try to pump money into a system that, again, has always been underserved and underfunded. Some of the reasons why you're seeing such dramatic increases have to do with our contract with New Life Tribal Clinic, which is a tribal 6 to 8 provider, and they have larger reimbursement rates than we've been used to seeing. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers from New Life in terms of served, but that is a medication-assisted treatment program. They do methadone, they do opioid treatment. treatment program. They do methadone, they do opioid treatment, and so we have seen a significant investment in that service. And we've seen significant growth with that contractor, which is great. Every person that goes there is a person that wasn't receiving that service before. The other driver of the increase in our drug-medicale contract is payment reform. So in recognition that the behavioral health system, and really specifically the drug-medicale system, has received pennies on the dollar in terms of parity with physical health care. And there has been no parity with physical health care despite the fact that we provide life-saving health care every single day. The state finally said, you know what? That's enough. They negotiated with the federal government, the setters for Medicaid, and said, we're going to get higher reimbursement rates for the services that you're already doing. So part of that will take a long time to take effect. We eventually hope that the increased patient revenue will allow us to advocate and negotiate for higher salaries for our staff. It's very hard to do the work without staff, and that's one of our greatest issues right now. And so we're hoping to see, again, that patient revenue realize over the course of the next year. And the projections that you see within this present drug-medicale contract spanning through '27 are based on the new rates. And so we did see our rates about triple, again, which is just bringing us up to parity with health care. And so I would like to offer the frame of, this isn't a significant investment, this is actually the bare minimum. And the bare minimum has not been met for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
So I think, I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate and acknowledge the hard work that everyone's doing. But I believe we're on three years in a row, and there's always a reason for it. But hey, there might be another reason in the future. We keep adding more and more money that we're planning to spend, but yet each year, for some reason or another, we're coming to a request to ask for a loan to help keep behavioral health afloat. And so that eventually gets paid back, whether it's the payment system that wasn't working because the state wasn't put together well, whether it's because we got surprise bills that we weren't aware of, and we had to pull from our reserves in order to pay it off. The higher we go in the millions of dollars of what we are allowed to spend, the more of a situation that we can put ourselves in if there's a kink in the system where we don't get paid. Which is why I think that it's important for us to continue to stay focused on not just the work that's being done and the money that's being spent, but also the outcomes that comes out of this. This is a lot of money, and we talk about New Life, appreciate that it's there, but I don't think it's a great, efficient use of money when that's a $600-plus charge versus someone else that would charge for that at around $50. So I would love to find a, to make sure that we're focused on efficiencies of tax dollars, and making sure that we get the return on investment. I'm not making any questions, I'm just making statements that I would like to see more reporting and more constant updates, in the sense that we just had the proclamation of 79 people that passed away from opioid issues, overdose. And I just want to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball, as a board.
Do you have any more comments, Director Jones?
Is there currently like an ad hoc committee that addresses this with you, like that works with you hand-in-hand on this? Like how we have, like for Continuum, we have two board supervisors that are working with you, or on others? Do we have that currently?
We have the Behavioral Health Advisory Board.
And is there, how many supervisors are on that?
I believe there's one.
Yeah?
Yeah. It's typically Supervisor Green, right? Yeah.
Is there an alternate that we know?
I believe it may have been Supervisor Spatier, but I'm not sure. I don't have that offhand.
You're talking about the Mental Health, MHSA?
No. I'm talking about the, it's changed to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. So the bylaws were recently changed to reflect an encompassing Behavioral Health Advisory Board for both the mental health and drug-medicale plans. So that would be our advisory board. That is, of course, an extension of you all, right?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I was just thinking, too, that with the, with the amount of discussion and possible work on this, that you're requesting Supervisor Spatier maybe, like how we do with other things, maybe put together an ad hoc so it can be more intimately involved or something of the like? Or would you rather just have reports to us as a whole?
I just think that, I think the board should be made aware of where we stand, how much work we're doing, how many people we're touching. I just, committees, ad hoc committees lack the ability to provide direction.
I will say that your board had directed our department to come back here very soon to present on our external quality review audit. We're preparing that, and so it is our intention to report or have a presentation of data. It's hard to talk about all of our programs and services in one shot, so we kind of break it out into pieces. But that external quality review audit will cover all of our mental health plan. So we plan to present all of our audits that we have with the state, the findings, corrective action plans, things like that. And so that is something to be expected, I would say, within the next month.
That's, that's good for me.
Okay. Any comments from the public? And I'm not seeing anyone in the Zoom room or the chambers, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, offer the resolution?
Yeah, Wendy, the resolution has been offered. Can we get roll call, please? Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Paisa?
Yes.
Okay. 511 is approve amendment number two to the agreement between the County of Lake and Smith Waters Group for fiscal years 2022 to 25, with no change to the contract maximum, and authorize the board chair to sign. Supervisor Spatier?
So there is a change in payment terms that added hours monthly. But I wanted to change something that is just from the previous amendment as well. And it's something that I've never, it's never caught my attention before, but it did this time. I passed it by our county council. We've been changing the payment terms within Exhibit B, but not the compensation within the main language of the contract. And so what I'm asking is for adding or amending Section 3 compensation. Contractor has been selected by county to provide the services described here under in Exhibit A attached here to. Compensation to contractor shall not exceed $135,000. The county shall compensate contractor for services rendered in accordance with the provisions set forth in Exhibit B titled Fiscal Provisions attached here to and incorporated herein, provided that contractor is not in default under any provisions of this agreement. And that's the same language from the original contract, other than changing the total not to exceed. Having two separate compensation that does not match the payment terms in a contract makes it very contrary. So again, passed it by county council, having both match, and that's the only change that I'm requesting.
Any comment, Lloyd?
So for this particular item, the amendment number two is asking for, is requesting an amendment to specifically Exhibit B 4.1, which changes the amount of hours at $58 per hour. Now, if that changes the amount of compensation, which from the, from Amendment number one, it's capped at $135,000, then there would need to be an amendment to the compensation provision, Section 3 of the agreement. So perhaps Director Jones may have some clarification on that, whether or not the $58 per hour would increase the maximum cap of the compensation. And if not, then there would, for this particular item, there wouldn't be a need to change the compensation provision then, and we could leave it as such with just an amendment to Exhibit B, Section 4.2 of Exhibit B.
Then that was my mistake on that one.
Thank you, counsel. No, this will not result in a change to the total compensation.
So we can leave it as is?
Yes, your board may determine it, leave it as is, with just the amendment to Exhibit B.
Well, counsel, send that language, or I'll connect with you, Lloyd.
Do you want to add the language now, or do you want to amend it later?
It's, it's the same as what's being...
Correct.
Okay.
It would be the same.
Okay.
I made a mistake on that one.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve amendment number two to the agreement between the County of Lake and the Smith Waters Group for fiscal years 2022 through 2025, with no change of the contract maximum, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. 5.13. Approve.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
We do have a 1015 public hearing.
Okay. Let me just, you can stay.
Okay.
I think, we're just going to continue it.
Okay.
Okay, 6.6, 1015 AM public hearing. Consideration of resolution approving resolutions and Capitol Fire Facility and Equipment Plan submitted by the Lake County Fire Agencies... Oh, this is not being continued, this one's we're doing. Resolutions approving and Capitol Fire Facility and Equipment Plan submitted by Lake County Fire Agencies and updating the Lake County Capitol Fire Facility and Equipment Plan. And this is by the admin office?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, you're up.
So 6.6?
Yes.
Good morning, board. Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. So for this public hearing, it's an annual item with the fire districts where we approve their resolutions, which has already been done. They're already at the max fee, so there is no change year over year. But the actual memo, so in October of 1992, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance 2114 establishing a fire mitigation fee program that is applicable on new construction. Persuasive to this ordinance, each local fire district adopted a Capitol Fire Facility and Equipment Plan, which serves as the individual, which serves as the basis for the findings that support each district's requested fire mitigation fees. Those individual plans and findings were then collectively adopted by your board to become the Lake County Fire Facility and Equipment, and Equipment Plan, which is currently in effect. The subject ordinance also directs the fire districts to annually submit a resolution which reflects re-adoption of their findings and a request to continue imposition of their fire mitigation fees. And that's the item before you today.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, I didn't have a question on this until you mentioned something. You said maximum amount. Is it really at the maximum amount?
From everything I know, yes. It's at the maximum they're allowed to charge for the mitigation.
And that's a state law as far as the dollar maximum?
I can't answer that directly.
Okay.
I have a feeling it's probably related to the ordinance.
Because I know we collect 100% of their fee, but I wasn't aware that there was a maximum on the fee.
This is about their fee going up or down. There's a cap on what their fee can be. And they've all reached that cap.
The dollar per square foot.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Then we'll bring it back to the board for action.
There's nothing further, Madam Chair. Offer the resolution.
All right, Wendy, the resolution's been offered. Let's do roll call. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Paisa?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for being late.
You were right on time. Okay, now we will go back to 513. Approve the lease agreement between the County of Lake and Berg Investment LP for 13300 East Highway 20 Unit and Clear Lake Oaks for a term commencing on July 1, 2023 and ending on February 29, 2028, and authorize Behavioral Health Director to sign. Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you. There was two things in here on Section 2.01 under the term. It says that it's a 50-month term, and as of, after the first eight months of the lease, there shall be an annual increase of 3%. When you go to 3.01, the initial term is one through six months. Then it skips month seven, and it goes eight to 18. And I would suspect, since the first eight months are supposed to be the initial, that it should be one through eight. I don't know what it's supposed to be, but something's not right, and I just want to make sure that we're paying what we should be paying, and what we would be approving does not match what 2.01 says. And also, at the bottom, just wanted to, since I pulled this, is we still have Todd Metcalf, two directors ago, on the, two tenant representative, and I'd love to make that be our new administrator, Elise Jones. But the, the monthly stuff, I just, again, want to make sure that a contract is understood by both parties as far as what we're paying, and I'm not quite sure what I'm approving since it doesn't match two and three.
Director Jones?
It may be cleaner just to bring that back next week.
Okay.
I apologize.
Is it on the lease that it says? Is that what you're talking about?
It's on Section 3 under rent.
We're not paying...
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. Got it.
We're skipping a month, and initially in 2.01, it says the first eight months is a certain amount, and then it increases by 3%. But here it says month one through six. So I feel like we're paying more than we should.
Oh, okay. No, I was asking about the Todd Metcalf. I don't see his name, but...
It's on page...
1.03 on page one is where his name appears.
Got it.
And page 10.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll continue this item. I'll see if there's any public comment. I don't see anybody in the chambers. Don't see anybody in the Zoom. Okay, so we'll bring this one back next week. 5.15. Approve amendment number four to the agreement between the County of Lake and Sierra Vista for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations in the amount of $106,572, and authorize the board chair to sign. Supervisor Spatier?
Yes. So this one, I double-checked. That is missing the compensation. We are increasing the compensation here. We are changing Exhibit B Part 4 under payment terms, but not Section 3 of the main agreement for compensation. And I've written out the language. Compensation. Contractor has been selected by county to provide the services described here under in Exhibit A titled Scope of Services. Compensation contractor shall not exceed $106,572. And the county shall compensate contractor for services rendered in accordance with the provisions set forth in Exhibit B titled Fiscal Provisions attached here to and incorporated herein, provided that contractor is not in default under any provisions of this agreement. And that's the amendment that I would like to make, so that the compensation matches the payment terms.
County Council?
Yes. So that amendment, if your board decides to take that amendment, it would be approval of the contract, contract amendment number four as amended.
Director Jones?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Public comment? Anyone? Not seeing anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room, so I will bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I approve amendment number four to the agreement between County of Lake and Sierra Vista for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations in the amount of $106,572, and authorize the board chair to sign as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Since Director Jones is here, you may wish to take up 7.3, and I'll notify Lars if you want to take 7.6 up afterwards, since she's still here, because it relates to behavioral health. Before our next item at 11.
Okay, yes. 7.3. Consideration of request for motion by the board to designate the chief administrative officer as... Officer as the signer for the Chair on All Documents as Indicated by Resolution Twenty Twenty Three Dash Three Four, Resolution of the Lake County Board of Supervisors Authorizing the Application for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. I'll turn this over to you, Director Jones.
Thank you. So, your Board previously passed this agreement via a resolution, so there's no change to that. The HCD, the Housing and Community Development Commission that oversees these grants is extremely particular, and so while the resolution does state that a designee may sign, they're asking that you make a motion to specify who that designee may be, and of course, typically it is the CAO, but I will leave that to your discretion, Chair.
So, okay, any comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Just for clarification, because I understood this as meaning the CAO as well, I was surprised, I guess I didn't read that it was from behavioral health, even though I understood it was asking for the CAO to sign. That is the appropriate direction to move forward with, I take? Okay, just wanted to check in. And I offer the resolution?
Or a motion? I'm not quite...
It's a resolution.
It was a resolution that has already been approved, so I'm not sure how it works when you're just trying to make a...
I offer an amendment to the resolution?
Let me see what the...
Or is it just a motion to allow the CAO to sign?
It says, but, motion.
And yes, since it's done pursuant to the terms of the resolution, it would be by, a motion by the Board to designate the CAO as the signer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then, we wanted to do seven point six.
Yes, and Director Ewing is available via Zoom.
Okay, great. Okay, seven point six, Consideration of Amendment One to the Agreement with Core Design Group for Facility Design Services for the Behavioral Health Clear Lake Facility Expansion Project, and we've got Director Ewing.
Good morning, so the, actually requesting that this item be continued to next week, the appropriations for this project were not in the, at the recommended budget, so they'll be at final. So, the continuation of the final budget means this one would, I would ask it to be moved to next week following the approval of the budget.
Any comment? Any comment from the public? Okay. All right, then we will just continue this item and see you next week.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're done now, until after lunch. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I have alerted both Director French, and we'll do, notified Director Deleon if you're willing to take those up before eleven o'clock.
Okay, are they available now?
I'm emailing them as I speak.
What?
I was just wondering if we told people that we're not doing six, seven?
Well, we haven't gotten there yet. It's at eleven. There we have Director Deleon, so we will go to five point four zero. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section Three Eight Point Two Two, as competitive bidding is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of the goods and services, and competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit to the county, and B, approve agreement with Cal Est Analytical Laboratory for Water Sampling Analysis in the Amount Not to Exceed Forty Nine Thousand Dollars Per Fiscal Year, and authorize the Water Resources District Director to sign the agreement, and this was pulled by you, Supervisor Spatier?
Yes. This one, I struggle with, and obviously I pulled the following one as well, and this is the same, same basic concept of where I struggle, and that's with the waiving of the formal bidding process. I get it that Director Deleon provided quite a large number of reasons, but I feel that I'm lacking documentative reason to say that no other lab can do what we're asking this lab to do. Usually, for unique services, we request documentation to be provided. Here, we have a lot of statements from our department about that. I, I will say it's on me for not noticing, I know we did approve in the past, I think it was twenty twenty-one, a contract or agreement between the cities and the county to utilize certain labs. I was not aware at that time, and I'll do better to pay attention, that we were not going to do a formal bidding process, or that these labs were specifically unique. We just talked about a lab situation, I think in our last meeting, maybe two weeks ago, maybe it was about a month ago, actually it's August fifteenth, it's in our memo, and here it speaks to that lab not being able to conduct the things we're asking this lab to do. And I know from looking from a layman perspective, because I'm not an expert on what each lab does, there are multiple state labs throughout the state of California. I just, I feel like there's a need to eventually do these bidding processes, there's a reason behind them. I feel like we've locked ourselves in for this, but I also feel very uncomfortable with continuously waiving without documented reasons behind it. And so, I just wanted to open up that conversation, because I'm not sure that I can move forward.
Director Deleon?
Good morning, Board. Well, short of attaching a whole bunch of documents, I feel like our staff provided adequate justification for waiving. These are special labs, and the tests that they perform is a result of state orders for a particular compound that they want tested. One of the labs is, specializes in pyrethroid pesticide insect toxicity, and again, these are very specialized tests. They are, there's only a handful of them that are identified in the state as having approved testing methods. And so, both of these labs, as Supervisor Sabatier pointed out, were listed in the agreements between the two cities and the county for the sharing of costs related to these tests. I should also note that both of these labs were included in our Quality Assurance Plan, which was approved by the state for our stormwater testing program. Again, these are specialized tests and specialized firms, and we've identified that, that they have been included in multiple plans and agreements, and we feel that the test has been met, that these are specialized, and that performing an RFP would have no public benefit, because we'd probably end up with these two labs. So, with that, that's our justification for waiving the RFP process, which, by the way, is allowed in the purchasing ordinance. So, thank you, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Supervisor Spatier?
I do have a second question. So, from what I understand, this is only supposed to go through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, because that's what the agreement with the cities are, but here, we're looking at a term all the way through July first, twenty twenty-eight, which increases my concerns of no bidding and such a long term, and again, mimicking my same arguments from the August fifteenth conversation. Does it have to go through July first, twenty twenty-eight, if it's specific to that agreement? Or are there other labs that are outside of the scope of the Clean Water Act Agreement that we made with the cities?
Well, again, these, these labs, the pyrethroid order from the state is due to expire in December of twenty twenty-four. So, one of the labs that we proposed has a term of one year to get us through that pyrethroid specialized testing. But the other lab, again, has been listed in our Quality Assurance Plan. We've been notified by the state that if we propose changes to that, that they'll need to go back through the review process to ensure that any lab that, that we propose and change in our plan is, meets with their approval, and all of their tests are certified by the state. So, it's, again, we're proposing the use of a lab that has been identified by the state as acceptable, and is in our, our plan.
Thank you for the response.
Okay, any more comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I see kind of a lengthy recommended action, is that the form of a motion, it looks like, or is it a twofer? Would I do A and B in one lump?
Your Board may just take the A and B separately, by motion for each.
Yeah, I'll do that. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section Thirty Eight Point Two, Part N Two, as competitive bidding is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of these goods and services, and that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit to the county.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Madam Chair, I also move to approve the agreement with Cal Test Analytical Laboratory for Water Sampling Analysis in the Amount Not to Exceed Forty Nine Thousand Dollars Per Fiscal Year, and authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And while we have you, Director Deleon, we can do five point four one. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section Thirty Eight Two Two, as competitive bidding is not in the public interest due to the unique natures of the goods and services, and B, approve agreement with Pacific Eco Risk Analytic Laboratories for Water and Sediment Pyrethroid Toxicity Analysis in the Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred Thousand Dollars Per Fiscal Year, and authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreement. This was pulled by Supervisor Spatier.
That word is a lot easier when you're involved in the Clean Water Act Committee, for sure. Just the same comments, I'm not gonna belabor the points. Director Deleon, you had said it was for a year, this one's through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, just want to make sure that that's what you are looking for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I will do the same as far as my vote, I do not agree with the waiving of the bidding, but I will agree on the contract, as I feel like there's no other choice other than to hijack this project and not make it move forward, and the clean water projects aren't necessary, so.
Any further comment from the Board? Any public comment? Bring it back to the board for action.
Just a quick question before I make the motion. On this staff report, the recommended action under A does make a finding of the unique nature of the goods and services, but it doesn't include the boilerplate language that no economic benefit would accrue to the county. That may just be an oversight, so if I make the motion, I'd like to do the twofer, I'd like to make sure we have the unique nature of the goods, and also no economic benefit, if that's okay.
County Council?
That would be up to Director Deleon as to the grounds that he's utilizing for the exemption from competitive bidding.
I support that modification.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I move to, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section Thirty Eight Point Two, Part N Two, as competitive bidding is not in the public interest due to the unique, unique nature of the goods and services, and no economic benefit would accrue to the county.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Also move to approve the agreement with Pacific Eco Risk Analytical Laboratory for Water and Sediment Pyrethroid Toxicity Analysis in the Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred Thousand Dollars Per Fiscal Year, and authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Director Deleon.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've got five point six...
Real quick question, if...
I'm sorry, yeah, five point two six, yes.
If seven point two would be for Director Deleon too, so I just wanted to see if that would time out well.
I'm just trying to get through all the consent first. Okay, five point two six, we've got IT Director Shane French. Okay, waive the formal bidding requirement and authorize the IT Director to issue purchase order for renewal of Microsoft apps for enterprise and associated licenses to Dell Marketing LP. And this was pulled by Supervisor Spatier.
So, unfortunately, I'm on a roll with the wave of the formal bidding. Here, there was not a specific exemption that was provided, and in speaking with Director French, I believe that the extension of, or extension of renewal, or something like that, is the exemption that we would need to provide in order to waive the formal bidding, since this is a continual expense to continue the software that we use.
Yeah, there's a couple of things going on with this one, and this does not increase more than CPI, but in addition, and I didn't put this in the memo, because this is actually a three-year agreement, so we're kind of on the hook for the three-year regardless, but it's also a competitively bid contract, it's on the Microsoft Riverside Agreement, which is, it's pretty much the one you use if you're in local government, just because it's, it's the big one. So, in addition to it not increasing, it's also on that, that piggyback contract. Yep.
Okay, any comments from the Board? Anyone in the chambers? And no one in Zoom? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
And I believe it's move to waive the formal bidding requirement due to Thirty Eight Point One exemption titled "Extension of Annual Agreement," and authorize the IT Director to issue purchase order for renewal of Microsoft apps for enterprise and associated licenses to Dell Marketing LP.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna... We're gonna... Is Lars still available? I can just, wait, did we, we did that one? Sorry. There's just too many items today. Okay, so we're through all the consent, except for five fourteen, which we're doing after lunch.
Then we do three three?
Oh, it didn't make it on the list. Yeah, let's go do five point three three. Okay, do we have Director Harder? There he is, okay. Five point three three, approve the MOU between Lakosan and South Lake Fire Protection District and the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection for Operations, and placement of an air curtain incinerator in Middletown at the west end of Middletown Waste Water Treatment Plant, and authorize the Chair to sign the MOU, and there, the term was left blank in this agreement, so I'll just pass it over to Director Harder.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. You are correct, we neglected to include the term of the agreement or the MOU within it before it went to you for consideration, so I've been in contact with Chief Duncan of CalFire, and we agreed that a three-year initial term was acceptable to both parties, so what we recommend is putting the start date in that clause on the contract. So what we recommend is putting the start date in that clause on the contract, which is clause number six, that the initial term of this MOU shall be from today's date, September 12th, 2023, until September 30th, 2026. So the recommendation is that the board move to authorize the Chair to sign it contingent upon an initial and approved agreement from Chief Duncan. He's already signed it, but we do want his formal initialing and approval on the modified MOU.
Okay. Thank you, Director Harder. Any comments from the board?
Just a question on the term. This appears to be a continuation or relocation of what's important for disaster response in terms of disposal of waste, but an initial term of three years kind of pushes the envelope to what I would consider a temporary use or an emergency use of the property and a little bit closer into what may, a standing operation that may require some sort of use permit or something like that, and maybe permitting from air quality control. So certainly supportive of doing whatever we can to support the recovery, but as a temporary fix, an initial term of three years sounds more like a permanent operation to me. So could you speak to that?
The air curtain incinerator itself is a temporary operation. I believe they were already coordinated with air quality, so those permits have been, you know, taken care of by CalFire and Southlake Fire Control Protection District. If the board is more comfortable with a shorter term, I'm certainly agreeable to that, and I believe Chief Duncan would be as well. In either case, whichever term the board decides to approve, it does need to go back to Chief Duncan for his formal approval before it will be signed by the Chair.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, since the Valley Fire and every other, you know, disaster that we've had, I'm not gonna, can't name all 18 or 19 of them at this point, but, you know, this is, it's gonna be probably for the next few years here, obviously, that we're doing. I know CalFire's worked hard to bring these into the area. I think that the position that is going to be set in on 175 there with the sewers plant is the right way. I think the three-year agreement definitely makes, you know, a good start, but, you know, I'm okay with the three years because we know the long-term recovery process, you know, we started out talking after the Valley Fire, that'd be three years. So we know it's most likely going to be a decade, and we've got a lot of work on the vegetation abatement stuff that we're doing. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I hear questions Supervisor Green, but I still think the three-year term is the right way to start out.
Supervisor Spatier?
I appreciate the question from Supervisor Green. I'm okay with the three years, but there's one thing I didn't see in the memo or hear from Director Harder, just to make sure that we're equitable in what we're asking the public and what we're asking from ourselves as a government agency. Has CDD signed off on the temporary use of those things as far as any CEQA exemption or anything like that? Because I know we've been dealing with temporary buildings, and yet we've had to go through the process of ensuring CEQA, and I just think that's the only thing on the checklist that I am not aware of. But if that's occurred, I'd just like to know. Just curious.
I'm not aware of it occurring. Well, it hasn't occurred for our site that I'm aware of, but it may have occurred for the other location. It is probably exempt, it's probably a permitted use under the existing zoning of the property, which is, you know, light industrial with the wastewater treatment plant out there already. We did not see a conflict in that, but I'd be happy to reach out to CDD and confirm that.
I think that would, in my opinion, make me more comfortable if you did reach out, but I'm okay with moving forward today with the three years.
Yeah, I'm okay moving forward, but I just want to clarify a few things. This is not disaster response or recovery. This is ongoing fuel work that we're working forward to mitigate. And, you know, yes, there's a lot of leftover biomass from our fires, but this is going to be for community drop-off days, this is for our tree mortality problem, this is for people doing defensible space, and ultimately will be part of our countywide biomass strategy. This is the site that has been used multiple times for grinding and chipping after the Valley Fire, after the tree removal along Highway 175. So this is a pretty minor operation compared to what has already occurred there, and the air quality permits are already in place. So I don't see an issue with this, and I don't have an issue with the three years either.
Supervisor Green?
And I'll just add, you know, I don't think incineration of waste would appear in the zoning ordinance as a permitted use, so I would take exception to that characterization. And also, if this is going to be routine, then there should be no objection to if this is type of activity that would normally require a use permit, including notification near my residence. You know, if this has been fully vetted and brought in by the neighborhood, if it's gone to math and everyone's happy with it, that's one thing. But if somebody was going to put an incinerator next to my property, I wouldn't notice on that, and I would want the opportunity to comment on that. So as a temporary use, one thing, but it sounds like the characterization here is this is going to be an ongoing standing operation. And in that context, I do believe we should at least take a look at what requirements might be there, because I don't necessarily accept the characterization that this would be a permitted use. But I'm not going to stand in the way of it.
We've got Director Turner, but I'm going to push back again and encourage you to look at the ACI technology. This is smokeless burn, so when you incinerate things, there's no effect around you, and it's been operating in a more dense community without any comment in the Cobb area. This is an area where there is no residents around. But I do see we have Director Turner. Go ahead, Director Turner.
There are certain reasons to get general plan conformity determinations, say that the county were to acquire land, dispose of land, things like that. Temporary use by the county, I don't think would require a use permit because of the county's exemption from the zoning code. However, notifications of neighbors, Mr. Harder has already experienced that, is a great idea when moving forward, just to keep everybody on the same page.
Director Gerhart?
Hi, Doug Gerhart, Air Quality. And I was just going to pipe in, and the current permit that the air curtain burner has allows for 15 days total operation at any one site. So that's, we haven't evaluated the long-term use at any one site. So there are, you know, 15 days of burning, and then they're supposed to move it to a different location. So permanent install is a little bit different type of permit. So they will have to go through further review to do this type of operation, so.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up, because this is not consistently used. This is going to be coordinated drop-off days with the community, and then the burn days will be organized by the fire department. So thank you for bringing that up.
Correct. And I would just further add that, you know, this was presented by Chief Duncan to me as a temporary measure. They would like to get them set up long-term in the county, but this is brought in kind of on a pilot operation. And as the Chair Pyska indicated, it is intermittent usage. Chief Duncan indicated probably two burn days a month is all he was anticipating with the organization and the coordination of community drop-off and movement of the goods being the other operation in that site. So as structured currently, it is envisioned as a temporary. Long-term, there is probably desire to bring one in the county full-term, but that would definitely go through community development and a longer permitting with air quality as well.
Right, two days a month, but during seasons when the conditions are appropriate, so it wouldn't be running throughout the season. And then this is a pilot program that we will be looking at as we develop our biomass strategy going forward. Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? And I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers or anyone in Zoom. Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Can I ask one more question? I know that Director Turner just left, but she did also offer something, and I just, again, if a resident installed this versus us, I'm just looking for some kind of sign-off from CDD, because moving something into a place, I don't know if it just dropped off on the ground, or if it has to be staked into the ground or whatever, but all those things potentially are similar processes that CDD has to go over to say this is exempt or not exempt or things like that. I'm just kind of curious if that's just a possibility. Again, I want to show the public that we're taking the same steps that the public would have to take, because there needs to be parity in the activities we do and the activities that the public does. We can't just say this is a good thing and do something. If it's an emergency, yes, we can make certain things happen without going through the process. Just kind of curious, I know that Director Turner mentioned the contacting of neighbors or things like that. Is that something that CDD should be signing off on, to say that there's no need for any further information or study? Just because I don't know enough about it, but I also know the typical process when somebody wants to use a property for something that is not specified for that specific use.
So we have a number of wood processing options in the zoning code. A wood yard, a lumberyard, a power generation facility, things like that. This does not fit any of those. This is more of a biomass, short-term processing with no connection to power. So if a person wanted to, who is not, if it was not a county project, if it was a private project, then we'd have to take a look at the project description, as we have done with a number of the biomass projects that have come before us so far. Is it a county-led project is one of our normal criteria to look at because of the exemption to the zoning ordinance. But should it be a private person, we would then take a look at the project description. How long is this going to be there? What sort of technology is this? Are there any admissions? We'd send it out for review just to make sure that, especially air quality, had no concerns or comments. We would take a look for CEQA. Where does it register? Do we have a categorical exemption or some sort of statutory exemption? Yeah, so it would go through a greater review were it a private project. However, I'm not certain. See, our resource planner has been doing a bunch of county-related projects, but I think they're mostly lake shore permits right now. So, but we'd be happy to work with Scott to see if there is any CEQA that is required, or if a categorical exemption is appropriate, we'd be happy to get that done as well. So we do always stand ready to support our departments in whatever CEQA needs they might have.
Okay, so it's a portable unit, it's not attached to anything, it's just set on the ground. Some units actually have wheels that can be moved because the intent is that it's frequently moved around. We do have in our county and around in our surrounding counties contractors who move these around constantly. They, because this is how you cleanly dispose of vineyard debris, orchard debris, all kinds of things, because it's smokeless. And so we've got contractors in our county who own these and move them around. It's part of, you know, part of the job of doing fuel reduction and disposition so that we don't have big piles burning. So it's just a tool, it's never permanently attached, it doesn't stake down, it doesn't have a foundation, it's just put on a trailer and moved around.
No, I get that.
Essentially, in light of the fact that it has been ongoing on a private basis as a tool to help with the chipping program, we would also take into consideration that we've received no complaints about such activity to date.
Right. In a neighborhood on the side of a highway. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, it's completely self-contained unit, it has been operating here in Lake County at different locations. I think it started in South County first, and it moved up to Cobb. So it's been in operation here in Lake County. I thought, you know, the MOU with Lakosan just makes sense in the South County there. Like we said, we've had multiple operations that push it through there. It is, you know, an air curtain incinerator. I know when you say incinerator, you think there's smoke coming out and all this stuff, but it is completely self-contained, it drops off. It is basically the same concept of the water dipping tanks that we just put in all the way around the county, with coordination of CalFire, just different, one is water, one is fire. But continue to move this forward. So hoping that we can move forward with this MOU today and bring any information back that there's something that needs to be completed. This is something that CalFire worked really hard to, you know, to lobby to get those being brought to Lake County. We missed out on a couple of the biomass pilot programs, and this is a step forward in that direction, and ultimately, you know, positive things. So, you know, I'm hoping that the board will support moving forward with the MOU today, and then if we need to have some more questions or we need to bring that back later on, then we'll continue to work on that. But I'm hoping that we can move forward with this today. I know it's been a long time in the working. You know, I know the CalFire has gone to the math meetings, I know we've talked about the incinerator. There's another math meeting this Thursday, so continuing along those efforts to continue moving forward here in Lake County, you know, I'm hoping the board will get three today to support this, so.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. And again, I, you know, I obviously want to encourage pilot projects and all that, but when we're transitioning from these temporary uses coming out of fire recovery into kicking the tires on what it's going to take to create some permanent biomass conversion facilities, here's a perfect opportunity, here's a good thing to do it on. I see what appears to be, under CEQA terms, a project with Southlake Fire, CalFire as a lead agency, or the county as a lead agency for the applicant, which is the fire department. And to the extent the contract puts any guardrails on, it says the fire agency actually has to work with the air quality management district, but there's not a corollary that they have to work with CDD to determine if any CEQA issues are there. I fully believe there's probably a cat X available to a public agency doing this, but I want to go back to the original thing. If we're going to be standing up pseudo-permanent facilities, we should look at it as such and not take a three-year contract and call it a temporary use. So I'm interested in figuring out if this, upon further review, is a project under CEQA, number one. Number two, if it is, there's very likely a cat X in there, but we can't even do that until we circulate this as a project under CEQA. And I think that would be the appropriate determination to hold off on the contract, think about whether this needs to be scoped as a proper project, take it to CDD if only for the limited time it takes to come back and get a cat X out of there. So that'd be my preference on that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, thank you.
Chief Duncan is in the Zoom meeting, he does have his hand raised.
All right, Chief Duncan. Good to see you this morning. Go ahead.
I just saw that Doug Gerhart signed on, so I'll let him go ahead and speak in addition to the project, because he is our permitting process. But this is looking to be like that three-year location, and then with the potential to move this thing somewhere else. So we have about 14 of these in service throughout the state, none with a CEQA requirement. We are using the county location just because it is a more universal and publicly-owned property, and will be more accessible to the folks out of Anderson Springs, Middletown, and will also tie in that Cobb area with that. So this machine could be moved in three years, and I anticipate doing that. We just wanted to make sure that the timeframe covered what the need was. So if we run out of fuel, which I highly doubt, we'll be happy to move that to another location where we can continue the operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Supervisor Spatier?
So, again, move forward today, yes, but I also feel that we just need, if it's CEQA exempt, there is nobody else in this room other than Director Turner and her staff that can say CEQA exempt. And so just passing that through her office, moving forward, passing this through our office, getting that sign-off, I think is just doing what we ask everyone else to do whenever they have any kind of project that they're doing, whether it's temporary or permanent. I think that's an appropriate way to move forward. That way, we're checking our boxes, just like we're asking everyone else to check their boxes. I don't want to hold this up, this is important. We need to continue to mitigate for potential future fires and clean up our environment, and I hope that that's the way we can move forward.
Okay, we're ready for action.
Before there's action, looking to see if there's consensus to also bring it to community development for the sign off.
If I could just add one last thing. I'm not even certain it qualifies as a project under the definition of SEQA, but we're happy to work with Scott offline. If any SEQA is necessary, we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to move to approve the MOU between Locust Inn and the South Lake Fire Protection District and the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection for operations and placement of an air curtain incinerator in Middletown at the west end of the Middletown Wastewater Treatment Plant for a three-year term, going through all permit steps, I guess, so with CDD and authorize your chair to sign the MOU.
Second.
All in favor?
If I may.
Would that be okay?
Madam Chair, there was also discussion of having the board approval be conditioned on SF. Oh, sorry.
Chief Duncan's approval. Condition upon approval.
Added.
And the amendment of the dates.
And the amendment of the dates.
We got lost in the conversation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we have an 11 o'clock item, 6.7, Consideration of Proposed Agreement Between the County of Lake and Placeworks for Planning Services for the General Plan and Local Plan Updates. Director Turner.
Thank you. I am super excited to bring this item to you, but at this time, since part of the funding is dependent on the approval of the budget, we are going to, we request that this item be carried over to the next, to September 19th after the approval of the budget. But basically, this item is a proposed agreement between the County of Lake and Placeworks, which is a planning consultant firm for the update of the general plan and all eight local area plans.
All right, well, we look forward to being able to go over this. This is very exciting. Do we have any comments from the board?
Just need the date and time certain, I assume, because of public hearings. So would that be an afternoon session?
It's not a hearing.
It's actually not a public hearing, but we did ask for a time since we want to have Placeworks staff available for any questions or comments.
And do you already have that time lined up for next week?
No.
I am happy to.
We'll take care of it and gender review. There's a lot going on for next week, so we'll get that time set up when we have the budget.
Yeah, since it's not a notice public hearing, you can just place this at any time that you find convenient.
Yes, we will. Yep, we're looking forward to that conversation. Okay, do we have any public comment? And I'm not seeing anyone in Zoom. Okay, bring it back and we will continue this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have Director DeLeon available if you wish to take up 7.2 before the.
Sure. Before 11:30.
Yes, 11:30.
All right, we've got time for that now. 7.2, Consideration of Letter of Support for the Lake County Watershed Protection District's Request for Wildlife Conservation Board Funding and Funding to Conduct a Clear Lake Hitch Habitat Improvement Planning and Assessment for Tulley Lake, Scotts Creek, and Adobe Creek. Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Water Resources has been busy. There's a lot going on with the hitch response and between Blue Ribbon Committee and Congressional Allocation, stuff like that. I'm learning how these projects kind of come and go and then come out again in a grant application. I don't want to misspeak on what's happening here, but my understanding when this was presented to our Scotts Valley Advisory Council is we have rebundled some of these projects that Water Resources has been working on, got a pre-application before Wildlife Conservation Board. There was a positive response and we've been invited to submit a full application. So we didn't quite get the job done at our advisory council for agenda reasons, but the draft letter attached would be in support of this grant application, which covers habitats in Scotts Creek, Adobe Creek, and the Tulley Lake portion of the watershed. I can let Water Resources speak to the actual tasks outlined in this grant application, but they're all very substantial and very important, not just to the hitch recovery but to water quality and Clear Lake generally. So if Water Resources wants to add anything to that, please do so. I apologize, this kind of came together in a slightly rushed manner, but I understand there is some time sensitivity to get this application in, so.
Director DeLeon.
Yes, good morning. I'm also joined by Angela DePaul Madaw. I don't really have any plans to add more than what's already been said. I will note that per county policy, we will be coming to your board, and perhaps this is part of the confusion, and we will be coming to your board tomorrow, or I'm sorry, next week for your approval and authorization to submit the grant. And of course, at that time, we'll be presenting every, all the details about the grant. But we do appreciate Supervisor Green's support of this and certainly the Scotts Valley community. This is a good project. Angela's worked very diligently on putting the grant together. And any specific questions that you might have regarding it, Angela is available, and we would appreciate your letter of support. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the board? Supervisor Spatier.
Since there's still a week before we submit this, are we also soliciting other partners to do the same as what we're doing today to approve a letter of support to try and bolster the application as much as possible?
Hi, Board. I can answer that. This is Angela DePaul Madaw from Water Resources. Yeah, we have project partners that have submitted letters from Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Big Valley Rancheria, Habemetal Pomo of Upper Lake, and we co-applied with Flow West Consultants that have been working with Big Valley and conducting flow studies already in Adobe Creek for several years.
Okay. All right, do we have any public comment? Not seeing, not seeing anyone in Zoom or in the chambers. So we can bring it back to the board for action.
Yeah, I would just like to add, some of the advisory council members, we're going to do individual letters. We weren't able to do it as a joint council because of the agenda, but they were going to follow up with individual letters and e-blasted out to the community. So I'm hoping we'll get some individual letters of support too.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What about the city of Lakeport, since they're kind of in the middle of that whole region that this grant is talking about, just to see if you can get a city support on it? Just wondering if you've had that conversation with them?
No, but I can.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I can fast-track that, but let me see what I can do on that. There's nothing further, Madam Chair. I move to approve the letter of support for the Lake County Watershed Protection District's Request for Wildlife Conservation Board Grant Funding to Conduct the Clear Lake Hitch Habitat Improvement Planning and Assessment for Tulley Lake, Scotts Creek, and Adobe Creek and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any motion passes?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Director Veach is on line for the next item, 7.4, if you have any questions for him. I just wanted to.
Okay, yes, let's do that. 7.4, Consideration of Appointment of County Librarian Christopher Veach to the North Bay Cooperative Library System's Board of Directors. Christopher, or Director Veach? He's just been promoted. There he is.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. I'm Christopher Veach, County Librarian. So the North Bay Cooperative Library System is a JPA that was created over 40 years ago to distribute funds from the state through the California Library Services Act and allow libraries to regionally share resources. As a county librarian and library director, I have been attending these meetings for over 10 years to advocate for our library system, and it's customary for the library director from each member library to serve as a representative for their system.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, my only comment, if you're not at the table, you're not getting what we need over here, and so I appreciate you wanting to step up and be a board member and advocate for the needs of Lake County. So thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Oh, yes.
The agenda item packet, or the agenda packet for this item, attached an agreement, which is a request to join the North Bay Cooperative Library System. The effect is the same, which effectively would appoint library, county librarian Christopher Veach to the North Bay Cooperative Library System, but for purposes of the motion itself, since it is identifying the agency to enter into this agreement, the motion would be to approve the agreement request to join the North Bay Cooperative Library System and authorize Christopher Veach to sign on behalf of the applicant, agency, County of Lake.
I believe that we already are a member, and that is a historical document to demonstrate the purpose of the North Bay Library Cooperative System.
If that's the case, because the one attachment in the agenda packet had blank signature field, so I wasn't sure if it was already been executed by the County of Lake as far as this agreement for a request to join the North Bay Cooperative Library System.
It had, we have been a member for over 40 years, so.
19, April 24th, 1978. I see a date on here, the Lake County Library.
Okay.
Good.
In that case, there would be just a motion to appoint Christopher Veach.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Question first. Can I get a question in?
Yes, Supervisor Green.
So it looks like we're a member of the JPA. I'm looking into organizational documents. So we're not appointing you as a JPA member. We're already a JPA member, and I don't see in here that there must be a board of directors or each individual sits on the board of directors. So my only question is, are we appointing you to the board of directors of the JPA and should we so state? And just because it's helpful to have alternates designated sometime, should we, in approving your appointment, also approve some authority for you to appoint a delegate should you not be able to attend in person?
I don't believe an alternate is necessary. They do not, they meet about once or twice per year, so it's fairly easy for me to always appear before the JPA. I'm sorry, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I see in the title of the agenda item answers it. So we are appointing you to the board of directors of the JPA, so it wasn't super clear in the agreement, but yeah, that's what we're doing. We're appointing you to the board of directors, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Congratulations. Okay. 7.4. Okay, we've got, let's do the 7.5 appointments. We've got Consideration of the Following Advisory Board Appointments. We've got first five. Can start with first five. We've got one appointee, Carly Sherman.
Can you do them all individually?
Well, we've got.
We've got to do per committee.
Yeah, per committee. Yeah, so first is Carly Sherman.
She's already on there and wishes to continue.
Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back. Action.
We have to appoint Carly Sherman to first five Lake Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have the Heritage Commission, and we've got one applicant, Gordon Haggett. Any comment? No? All right, public comment? All right, bring it back for action.
We have to approve Gordon Haggett to the Heritage Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a quick question. Was he appointed as, I believe he's in District Four, or as a public at large?
I think it's public at large.
Okay.
That's what his application said.
Okay.
Just because both were open, that's why I was wondering.
So, yes, I think it was the public at large.
Library Advisory Board. We've got Jamie Buckner Bridges. Any comment? Any public comment? All right, I'll bring it back for action.
We have to approve Jamie Buckner Bridges to the Library Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Resource Conservation District, we have one vacancy and one applicant, Jacob Bridges. Comments?
No comment.
Public comment? Okay, back to the board for action.
We have to approve Jacob Bridges to the Lake County Resource Conservation District Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the Food Policy Council, we have 13 vacancies and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 applicants. Cornelia Seber Davis, Dawn Smith, Gabriela Perez, Al Barasine, Katie Evans, Loretta Ray, Rebecca Harper, Anthony Steele, Baird Hara, and Colleen Wrench. Supervisor Spatier?
So just wanted to say Gabby Perez would be under the Red Cross, Dawn Smith would be under Hospital, Rebecca Harper under the Farm Bureau, Colleen Wrench and Katie Evans under Local Farmers, Baird Hara, not sure if I pronounced that correctly or not, from NCO, Anthony Steele under the tribal membership, Loretta Ray under the Farmer's Market, oh, sorry, Loretta Ray is the Gleaners, our food bank, Cornelia Seber Davis, it would be under the Farmer's Market, and those would be the applicable membership seats that those individuals would fill.
Any public comment? Okay, bringing it back to the board for action.
And I am still working on the last two applications, and that would be education and grocery store, waiting on those applications to be submitted. And I move to approve Gabriela Perez, Dawn Smith, Rebecca Harper, Colleen Wrench, Baird Hara, Anthony Steele, Loretta Ray, Katie Evans, Cornelia Seber Davis, for the Food Policy Council appointments as the membership status stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll just wait one minute. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, six-minute break. We'll come back at 11:35. Okay, we are going to go to 6.8, our 11:30 AM item. A, Consideration of the County of Lake Acting as Lead Agency on a Planning Grant Application Under the Community Resilience Center Grant Program and the California Strategic Growth Council, and B, Consideration of Resolution Approving the Application to Apply for Up to $500,000 in Grant Funds Under the Community Resilience Center Program of Strategic Growth Council and of the California Department of Conservation, and C, Consideration of a Letter of Commitment and Authorize the Chair to Sign. And I'm going to turn this over to our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer, Terry Loggson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Board. I'm very excited to bring this item for your consideration. I have a little presentation that... I have a little presentation that I adapted, well, it's mostly the Tuolumne Resource Center, Community Resource Center. The county of Tuolumne got funding before this grant program, they patched it together, so I wanted to run through it a little bit. This particular map that you see is something that I had to create for the grant application, and it doesn't list everything, but you will see that there are a number of place markers, and what they stand for is locations within the county. When we began these discussions, I don't know, six, seven months ago, knowing this funding was coming down, was what trusted facility is in every, or almost every community in Lake County, and that is the senior centers or community centers. And so this particular grant, the way that we have framed it is a hub and spoke model. And so these are each of the spokes that will be served by a future hub, which is the Upper Lake Senior Activity Center, the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, the Live Oaks Senior Center, and Clear Lake Oaks, the Spring Valley Community Center, the senior, what's the full name for the Clear Lake, senior community?
Highlands.
Highlands.
I know it's Highlands, Senior Activity or?
Senior Services Center.
Senior Services Center, thank you. The Middletown Senior Center, the Middletown Boys and Girls Club, which is operated by the Middletown Rancheria, the Little Red Schoolhouse, the Kelseyville Senior Center, Lakeport Senior Center, the Silvera Community Center in Lakeport, the Lake County Fairgrounds, and Galilee Lutheran Church. And Galilee Lutheran Church came into this conversation because one of our partners in the grant, which is Pastor Shannon Kimbeloff, who is with Red Cross, works with them, and that was the first location of our Pilot Neighbor Fest, and they were very interested in what we were discussing for this planning grant. And what this planning grant will do is, we're going to look at each of these facilities and find out what needs they have to upgrade their facility to serve as a cooling, warming, or clean air center. And it could be, you know, some of the senior centers have very strict contracts, so they can only be open to serve their population. Some of them can be their activity centers, and they've expanded, like Clear Lakes, where they could theoretically serve the entire public and perhaps be an evacuation shelter or an overnight shelter. Right now, that's not what we're looking at for any of these facilities, but what we're looking at is a place where it's neighborhood level, because so many of our members of our community don't have reliable transportation, so you need someplace close if you want to get out of the smoke, and if you want to cool down, or if you want to warm up. You want to go someplace that is trusted, familiar, and it's already in your community. And then the long-term project is what we envisioned from what we toured in Tuolumne, which is a standalone community resilience center that has office space so that it's sustainable, you know, there's people who are renting the office space that are going to provide services, it will have a warehouse, it will have meeting rooms, it can serve as an evacuation shelter. So go ahead and go to the next slide. And so this is the facility that we looked at in Tuolumne, the top one. So that is in the city of Tuolumne, and the bottom one is in the city of Groveland. Next one? And so just a little bit of the background, they went through this, the rim fire in 2013, and this grant program wasn't put together, they gave feedback to the state, but this is some of the types of the funding and what they needed to do to get funding and put it together for these resiliency hubs. Next one? And so this is just an overview of some of the funding that they needed, and they used to address their biomass issues that were imperiling the community. Next slide? And then they, a list of questions that they asked the community, you can go to the next slide. So what they really said was, ask the community, talk to the community, and so the way that we have put together this grant is primarily for a consultant who will do that work and work in coordination with myself to make sure that it happens. And so Groveland, their facility, the community wanted it to have a primary focus on serving their elderly and seniors, and the Tuolumne Center wanted it to be, because it's right downtown in the middle of Tuolumne, to focus on families, and it has a swimming pool outside, they offer college classes, you can go to the next slide. The next slide. I think this is mostly, this, I just wanted to make this information available to yourselves and to the community, you can go to the next slide. So what it mentioned on the previous slide, you don't have to go back, is a community stakeholder advisory committee. The way that this, we're setting this up is that that stakeholder, that advisory committee will be a subcommittee of the Risk Reduction Authority, because we have representatives on the RRA that serve everywhere in Lake County. The Fire Protection Districts have their contacts, the Water Purveyors have their contacts and boards, the tribes, tribal nations have their members and services that they provide. And so having a subcommittee, it doesn't have to be of the RRA members, but it'll be a subcommittee of the RRA who can help guide this. You can go to the next one. And so this is just the layout, the floor rendering, but we did a project, or not a project, an exercise when we toured the facility to talk about what we wanted for Lake County. And one of the major things that we need is warehouse space, and neither of those had warehouse spaces, but we know from going through all the disasters we've gone through is when supplies and come into the county, we need one place for it to go, and then it's distributed around. And that's how we came up with what we call the spoken hub model. This freestanding facility, you can go to the next slide, will, and the next one. And this freestanding facility will have the services like they have on this list, the Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency, which for us is North Coast Opportunity, they're our community action agency. They have a local college that does online courses, their HHSA provides services there, they plan to have a kiosk for their community development and planning department so that people can go in instead of having to go to the courthouse to get permits, and then other types of services like OES or just a community services unit office. Next slide? And so again, that's what the outside looked like at Tuolumne. Next slide? Isn't that nice? That's Groveland at night, yeah, you can just click through these, I don't really, I just wanted to make it, because it was such an impressive feat that they were able to pull together, and the facility, they purchased the land from the Tuolumne Band of Miwok Indians, and then the tribe gave property for the parking lot, and that's at Groveland, for the Tuolumne facility, and they're, both of them are, they're beautiful and brand-new, and they have clean air, excellent ventilation, which you need in these pandemic times, as well as, as we all know, during dense smoke events. So that is just a little snapshot. So what we're applying for is up to $500,000 for a planning grant. The idea, well, I'll go back, there's three stages for this grant. The first is a planning grant, and then there is the second level, which is resource, I forget what they typically call it, and then the third one is implementation, where you actually build, and it's a very long process, is what we heard from Tuolumne, to make sure you have the community on board. Also, in the second stage, they do not allow a lead applicant to apply on behalf of facilities that you do not own. And so there's a good, what we looked at is that each of the facilities, say for instance, the Live Oaks Senior Center in Lucerne, we, you know, that's not a county-owned facility, but what we want for them to have is a strategic plan so that they can seek funding, but they know what they need to do to upgrade their facility. I don't know how many times we've heard, oh, how many shovel-ready projects do you have? It's like, we don't really have any shovel-ready projects, because we never have the funding to put the plan together. And so that's what we're seeking for this. And it could be on the next round that we bring in other county-owned facilities, such as the, I don't know what it's called, but at Russell or Stinky Park in Lower Lake, there is a facility, and it has a kitchen, and it could use some upgrading, the Town Hall in Lower Lake, it may not need too much. Lease facilities that behavioral health has, right now, we have to have control of them, and maybe a lease would do that, I think it would. But there are other facilities that the county own that we can look at to do that upgrade. And so we're excited to identify a location for a brand-new CRC and get feedback from the community near and far who will be utilizing it, and so I hope that your board will approve and authorize the resolution to apply. Also included in your packet was something that was required for me to submit on the grant, which is this local climate change snapshot. And I did, I didn't intend to go over it, but I included it so that the public could have it. It's, it's, yeah, heavy reading. And then there is a letter of commitment from the county, which lists time, dedicated time for myself and Wendy to work on this, basically liaison with the consultants and direct them, invites and setting up community meetings. So I hope that your board is excited about this project as I am, because it's something that's very much needed, and I know we'll get the grant.
Terry, thank you so much for your leadership in this. We've been having weekly meetings with all of these partners for the last couple of months, and then we got to go on the field trip and be truly inspired by what's going on in Tuolumne, and their resilient centers have, are so successful, they are this year applying for more grant funding to build more of them out in the remote areas of their county, where they still have people that are underserved. And, you know, you did give us that climate data, which is hard to look at, but it's our reality, and it is our responsibility to harden our communities and make sure that we have resiliency embedded at the local level. So these hub outlets will be community-led and designed, as will this, I'm sorry, the spokes will be, and then the hub will certainly be. But the idea is that we're turnkey-ready for any event that comes our way any time of year, because we know it doesn't really matter what season we're in. The lights go off, the air gets smoky, low snow, heat wave, whatever happens, it all happens to us here in Lake County. So thank you so much. Supervisor Crandall? Do you have your pen up?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I know the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, that's, we own that, but we lease it to them, is that still how it goes, or did, I thought we leased it to them? Something like that.
We own the thrift shop.
Oh, it's the thrift, that's right, it is, it's the thrift shop, sorry. The clubhouse in Nice, it's owned by us. It used to be the Lions Club, it's right behind Keeland Park, backup, just in case that might be something, it's got infrastructure problems. It used to be on one of our project lists back in 2019, but we reallocated that funding to the Lucerne Harbor Project, so it's kind of just sitting there, open building.
Okay, great.
And they have been so important to our conversations, every week, they've been showing up. Supervisor Spatier?
So I did have two questions that automatically popped up. Number one, the map that you provided are prospective locations where enhancements and upgrades can be done, once this planning grant is done, and then we acquire more grant funding or other funding to throw at those facilities. I'm looking at the way that Tuolumne kind of went through their process, where they built two, and we're looking at like 12. What's our way of prioritizing, because if we try to do them all, then I feel like we're not going to get much done in comparison to if we isolate what is the priority areas? Is that something you're planning on looking at as you go through this planning process? Just because it looked like we're doing a jack-of-all-trades rather than expert-of-one type of thing? And I just wanted to check and see what your thoughts were on the way that you're going to process this.
Right, that's a really great question. So initially, looking at this, the idea was to make each of those sites what is typically called a community, or excuse me, Community Resilience Center, which is like the one we viewed in Tuolumne. However, a lot of the senior centers said, we can't be open to the public, we cannot, and we certainly don't have staffing, we don't have training, and so this is what we want to look at. We're not going to fund them to become like that building in Tuolumne. What we want is if the county to own a freestanding one that can serve all of those, so that's why it's a hub and spoke model. The hub will be this freestanding facility. Through this planning grant, what we're hoping to find is locations, possible locations, you know, to look at all the zoning, to look at the, what is needed infrastructure-wise, is there, you know, all of those things that you would look at when you're planning a facility, and then go for the next level, where we would look for designs, pinpoint down, do more community. But for the senior centers, and like, for instance, with the Lake County Fairgrounds, we all know that they tend to be the incident command for CAL FIRE for incidents. In most places, when you are evacuating your livestock or animals, you take it to the fairground. Our fairgrounds don't have that capability. And so we want to get a plan so that the fairgrounds can go for funding, and I can help look for funding for them to be able to have it, because we need the fairgrounds to be functional in that regards for livestock and animal evacuations.
And so this actually came up last winter. We were looking at a grant for the fairgrounds, and this would apply to any of the satellite spokes. Oh, here is a funding opportunity where we can apply to get the fairground built out to be exactly what we need to do, but you had to submit the plan.
Right.
And we didn't have the plan, and there's no money for the plan, and there were no time to develop that plan. So that's what's in this planning grant, is to get all those satellite spoke facilities a plan, and support so that they're ready to go and they can get that funding. It's not all going to come out of this. But we have been supporting those facilities with our ARPA funding and getting them things we need, and so every chance we get, we were going to try and get them, you know, upgrades to be sustainable. But that strategic plan is so necessary for each of those properties.
And I don't want to say I disagree, but I think that the funding that we have supported them hasn't necessarily been with the idea of this. It's been the idea of what services are you already offering, how do you help continue it, whether you're doing Meals on Wheels, whether you're doing senior center activities or things like that, this is a little bit more specific.
It's specific, but yeah, I mean, we asked them what they needed.
Yeah.
And we gave them money to do what they needed, and we're not, you know, that, it's just an example of like, when one senior center wanted solar panels and another senior center wanted a generator, that was their choice on what they needed, but this is to help them really get their plans in place for more funding.
And to tie all of that together, so maybe they got solar panels and they didn't really, well, we don't really have enough money for the battery backup, so that'll be identified in the plan.
So stop me if I'm outside of the scope, but I just think it's something that I don't feel is in existence, and that's MOUs to understand what is, like what can be done when we need them, what is approved for them. I just feel like we go with the closest one and try to figure out how to make it happen, but there's not a specific MOU to understand what are the responsibilities and roles of each individual. So I hope as we move forward to make this a little bit more permanent, a little bit more planned, rather than, I'm not going to say it's random, but depending on the emergencies, we have to pivot with what's needed for the community to continue to be served appropriately. But I just, I feel like we have a lot of handshake deals or a lot of approved conversations that, yes, that's what we're going to do, but I'd love to see us end up with MOUs with some of these individual sites in the long run, especially as we're supporting them to get some of the funding to make some of the changes that we're going to be asking them to make.
Well, that's the legwork that we've been doing right now, and that is the goal. And that's why we're finding out, okay, you're a senior center, you can only do this, okay, you can do this, you can do this, and so, you know, we need to get all that laid out, we need to have those understandings, and then we'll be moving into our strategic plan and MOUs.
Right, and to figure out where the gaps are, you know, when you look at Clear Lake Oaks, if the senior center there can only serve seniors, then we know that we need another. another facility. We need to identify something else for the residents.
Which is how we got
The Boys and Girls.
Double booking here in Middletown.
So, obviously, we already at the casino are shelter, we have the resources, you know, we have our MOUs with Red Cross, PG&E, we have another facility downtown that we're looking anyway. It's, it's right downtown, obviously, a mile out of town is a little challenging for some folks for, for us. We just put it up as, hey, we're moving in this direction anyway, we'll be part of the conversation. We have no problem signing an MOU down the road on that aspect to move it forward, but we're already putting in grants and this will help organizations like the tribe to go get other pots of funding because they're really looking for that community collaboration. And so, for our building, which is the Boys and Girls Club now, that, that's how it came to fruition in our conversation and it's right downtown. So, it just makes sense that we continue that on and we're having these conversations not only with the county at this time, but the other organizations we have agreements with out at the event center that we currently use. So, that's Red Cross, PG&E. We're moving, whether it becomes part of this spoke, it's going to be there anyway. So, we'll make sure that we finalize an MOU for that conversation once we get there. And I can only speak on behalf of our building for the, for the Middletown Ranch area.
Thank you, and we're really, really excited that it's part of it because it's the only facility that specifically serves youth. So, we want to learn from that and include that because it's an issue, you know, families may not have a place to go when they need clean air because there, maybe the kids aren't allowed at the senior center. We don't know that yet, but we're going to find out. So, thank you for participating.
And, and in the past, for multiple fires, you know, especially the River and the Ranch fires, it was a distribution center in the back of the house there for all the tribes, for air filters, many different things, the ME, the, the food packages, all that, the BIA reached out to us and it just made sense when we started to have the conversation. We've already done this, but you know, written down, as you said, in the middle of, you know, a disaster, you just do what you got to do and people call you, say, yep, facility's available, let's get moving. So, just, it made sense to be a part of this too for, for our community.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, very thorough. Obviously, planning, first part of the process, where it all lands with our various senior centers and all that, it'll probably work itself out. What I saw in the Tuolumne County example, we're like fully realize CRC's big deals and successive rounds of grant funding for construction, stuff like that. So, I don't think we're going to be able to shotgun that level of project around the county, but if, if our scoping and our planning drives us in that direction where we want like really full, full-service CRCs like that example, that's one thing. If our community through this planning grant wants to fluff up our existing facilities to the extent possible, and I do notice there are some location restrictions on subsequent grant monies, so. But the only thing I really wanted to compliment staff on, even if it was a requirement of the application, was the commitment letter. And I just wanted to highlight that because this, we have so many things going on in this county and we contribute so much staff time and resources and stuff like that and normally it falls under other duties as assigned. This breaks it out. This is exactly what we're doing in terms of supporting this effort. It's down to the dollars and cents, it's down to the FTEs and I really appreciate the ability to track in real time what, what we are doing as a county. And getting that grant letter gives me assurance that we're being responsible stewards, that obviously is going to reassure the, the state folks handling this, that we are committed and we're putting that commitment forth, but for my, my interest as a manager, if you will, I like to see that level of commitment be quantified as opposed to, oh, here's another meeting we're going to go to. So, I just wanted to compliment that. It may be just a simple, one-page grant requirement that you did a one-off on, but I, I want to highlight that as an example of things I'm looking for in all these broad things that we support. We do a great job getting the support out there and committing verbally to do these things. We don't do the best job all the time quantifying the level of that support. So, I love this letter for that.
Yeah, and this is a requirement of Terry's grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any public comment? One more comment from Supervisor Spatier.
Yeah, I just remembered that Ms. Lockston said something about the RRA. I just kind of want to understand where the RRA's role is in all of this or are they just kind of a recipient of the information of the planning process that you're going to be actively engaged in?
It's a great question. No, the, mostly a recipient of the information, but also the members of the RRA, we are going to be soliciting their assistance and help in convening the community groups to give feedback and to work with the senior centers because the members are all around the county. And so, the advisory committee will be a subcommittee of the RRA, but it won't be necess, like many of the subcommittees of the RRA, won't be members of the RRA. They'll just give updates to the RRA, which then can come back to your board.
Okay. So, we do, I'm going to open it up for public comment and we do have Shannon Kimball off. All right, she can go ahead and unmute and have three minutes. Thank you for
Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple comments in terms of the strategy around having spoke around the lake. Because we have the lake and the center, as we all know, it can make travel difficult, especially in fire season when roads may be closed or in inclement weather. So, the strategy is not to have these full-blown centers around the lake, as I think it was Supervisor Green that said, but more specifically that these hyper-local trusted partners that are already serving in communities, while they may not have the resources to be a full-blown center, the full-blown center can support them to do the work within their hypo-local community rather than forcing people out of their community into a single point of service. So, that's one thing. And then, the second thing I wanted to comment on is that part of the strategy of the American Red Cross in terms of the other partners that we're working with, whether it's Galilee Youth and Church, because there are no community or senior centers within that geographic area, which is quite isolated and has a number of seniors who don't have reliable transportation. So, in Galilee, that location was chosen specifically because there was not another option there. But then, Kelseyville Presbyterian Church also was working on becoming a resilience hub. They have a youth dedicated building that they're a part of. And then, there are areas, there are organizations that we think of as being senior centers, for example, Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, but it is not owned as the county. I think it was Supervisor Crandall that pointed out, the county owns the thrift shop but not the building. So, because they will not qualify for some of these county, state and federal funds because they are outside of that county structure, the Red Cross piece within this planning is that we are helping them to increase their capacity. So, we're working with Lucerne Alpine Senior Center to get a generator switch and we're working with them to provide an ADA accessible ramp so that people have easier access. So, it's, it's very, while this planning grant is the county plan, it really is a broader holistic strategy for the entire community, not only for community-owned partners. So, I just wanted to highlight that one piece as we were talking about how broad this planning really will be. And one of the questions that came up to, to me recently is why is this, why does it take so long for the planning grant? And I, I really wanted to emphasize, as Terry was saying, that the key to this, the strategy behind the Strategic Growth Council plan is that they are community-led. And so, we want to make certain that we're not rushing this process and that we're really listening to the community and what it is that they want, both for the hypo-local centers, but also for this one large center that's going to be able to resource all the smaller ones. And that was it. Thank you.
Great, perfect timing. Thank you, Shannon, for filling in the gaps that we might have missed. Okay, and then it looks like we've got a hand up. Betsy Khan can go ahead and unmute and you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would just like to say that all of these special programs should be part of the update of the general plan and the area plans. And, you know, that, it's a very high priority for those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment? Not seeing any, so we will bring it back to the board for action.
Just a real quick follow-up question. It's just a question because the way it's stated, and thank you for the clarification, Pastor Shannon. So, the presentation on the Tuolumne side focused on kind of like fully realized things. Now that I'm reading the staff report, it does talk about maybe we could at best do one of those major ones and then support the spokes. And that's reasonable, that's a reasonable conclusion. So, but wouldn't a planning grant be, an open-ended planning grant would be, we can look at both those models. Like, for example, a central hub and feeding the spokes could be okay, but there could be physical and financial constraints with those various spoke locations. So, I, I think, I, I just want to ask, like during the planning grant, we're not locked into one particular model. We, we may have some ideas, some broad-brush ideas as lined out here, right? But we're not committed to any particular model as this initial planning grant unfolds, right?
No, the intent is to find out what each of the spokes need to be upgraded, to be able to serve as a cooling center, warming, and when I say warming center, it's not an overnight, just a warming center and a clean air center. What do they need physically, financially, staffing-wise, volunteer-wise? And then, to identify a location, as we're having these conversations, where would it make sense to have a standalone hub?
Okay.
Well, and also, this is the initial phase and it can be augmented, you know, and built on as we go. As I mentioned, Tuolumne is developing more, but you got to start somewhere and you can't have too big of a plan where you can't get off the ground. So, this is our initial plan. It is a planning grant and we'll get through that and then, then we'll apply for the next two levels to get to implementation.
And I'm really hoping to learn a lot from talking to the senior and community centers about their needs because as you mentioned, there are other sites, whoops, there were other sites that I wasn't aware of that the county owns that could be. They just weren't identified in time because this grant, we hope to apply on Friday. But we'll learn these things to know and make it easier as we go forward with other locations.
Supervisor Spatier?
Two things, don't forget Juvenile Hall, if there's any way to implement them and how to upgrade with their needs, because they do offer that type of service already on a regular basis, but if we can enhance them during cooling and warming center, those who are experiencing homelessness would typically be directed there, just as another addition in, in that area. And then, finally, on Friday, when you submit the, if it's possible to send a copy of the application, because I think the details are not all right here in front of us, it's more of a perspective idea that's shared with us within this item, where the details within the grant are a little bit more specific as to who the partners are, what the expectations are and so on and so forth.
Okay. Okay, we're ready for action. Yep.
It's a three-parter.
I think Vice Chair Simon's got it.
That's all right, I'll second it. Mike wants to go ahead.
All right. I move to approve the County of Lake Act as lead agency on the planning grant application under the Community Resilience Centers Grant Program from the California Strategic Growth Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to offer the resolution.
Okay, Wendy, the resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatier, pardon me.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And finally, I move to approve this most excellent commitment letter and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you very much.
You're killing it.
I'll be back again soon.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, we need to reopen item 6.5?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The reopening would be suggested that it be done via motion
Yes, yes.
I move to reopen item 6.5?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We need to reopen 6.5, 9:15 a.m. public hearing, consideration of the final recommended budget for fiscal year 2023-24 for the County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. CIO Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize to the board, we need to revise the time certain to 1:30.
Okay, any board comment? Any public comment? Okay, well, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to continue the public hearing of the final recommended budget to the September 19th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting at 1:30 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. So, we've got our 1:30 item and
7:06.
7:07, we did 7:06.
Oh, wait, we moved it, that's right.
Yeah, okay. Do we have Director Marketan?
She's on vacation. Is she?
Well, we can do it after lunch and then we'll just have
My apologies, Madam Chair. First, we have Amber Davis from DSS to present this item.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, 7:07, consideration of Lake County Department of Social Services, LC DSS, department head authority to authorize contracts between $25,000 to $100,000 for out-of-county wraparound services without board approval if contracts are eligible under the master contract for wraparound services. And I will turn it over to you. I think you're on, oh, wait. Try speaking again? There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect, thanks, Amber.
Hi, my name is Amber Davis. I'm the Deputy Services Director for Lake County Social Services. Thank you, Madam Chairman and the board, for appearing us today. We're very excited to be here. This master contract has been in progress for over a year, attempting to figure out a way to both meet our mandates for services, support services for our families specifically in wraparound services at this time, which often are needed fairly quickly to maintain a placement so that a youth doesn't enter a higher level of care. But we also have a federal mandate that requires that we have aftercare services, which are wraparound services, for any youth that need an STRTP, which is a short-term therapeutic residential program. And so, sometimes what would happen is that these services would be over the amount of $3,000 which, per month, which would require us to have a contract through the county purchasing ordinance. And our process is great, but it can take one to two months for a contract to be completed depending on if it needs to be approved by county council or if it needs to be approved by county council through the board. And so, what we were finding is that we were having some issues with meeting both mandates of our regulations and also the county regulations for the purchasing ordinance. So, the department head, Crystal Marketan, actually reached out to Anita Brand, who was the fall of 2022, and asked her if she had any ideas of how we could move forward in a way that would be beneficial for everyone. And she was able to do some research in other counties and found that this is something that some counties were doing to assist them in similar situations. And she was the one that actually thought we should move forward and attempt to have a master contract approved. We've also met with the CIO office and the auditor's office to discuss this and they seem to be on board with us. So, we are here today requesting that you approve this master
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Supervisor Spatier? Supervisor Spatier?
Appreciate this being brought to us. I'll just be blunt, I'm not comfortable with signing off on something all the way up to $100,000. I also think that this is very specific to a department, and I also foresee that if we start approving on one department, that we will start seeing this coming from other departments as well. Looking at Behavioral Health, who deals with a whole lot of contracts, more so than I believe Social Services does. I would like to more look at, is $25,000 a ridiculous maximum amount at this moment in time, and we need to increase that. I don't know when we set $25,000 a while ago. I'm sure that other counties have different maximum contract allowances before having to bring it to the Board of Supervisors. I think that if we review it in a more general sense, then we're looking to provide efficiencies within every single department rather than a single department. And maybe I will not be in support of going to 100,000, but even if we go up to 50,000, it would help to make a whole lot more stuff efficient. And so that's the direction I would like to go, rather than a single department allowing for contracts up to 100,000 to go through. And I know it's more specific than just a department. I apologize.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. So first, as to the need for the flexibility and how to stay compliant with the regs, yeah, we need that. Getting these services in place rapidly is a challenge, and I have lived through some of those challenges, and it's not fun. Just on a very tangential thing to watch cases that are struggling and wraparound services that need to be provided, but there's some question about eligibility, or some question about whether we can go over our contract. So to the issue of whether DSS needs flexibility to get these wraparound services provided in a timely manner, absolutely. The question is what it's going to take to do that. So the master contract is fine as far as it goes, but it's kind of silent as to the standard purchasing requirements that go, like anything over 25K. So to Supervisor Sabatier's point, yeah, we could unpack whether the 25K is just unreasonable on its face, and I'd welcome that discussion. But for this particular item, I don't see that the terms of the contract are fine, the master contract idea is fine. I just don't know that there's anything in the terms of that contract, or if the fact that it is a master contract in and of itself exempts the requirement to seek approval for any contract over the 25K. So does the master contract, under our current purchasing ordinance, kind of end-run that normal 25K cap? Because it's not spelled out in the contract, it's not really spelled out in the staff report. So I want to support this. I do recognize it represents an exception of sorts. If the master contract approach is one valid way to get around that standard requirement, I don't see if I, yes, nodding heads or no nodding heads. Anyway, can we just clarify that a master contract is one vehicle that's allowed under our purchasing ordinance that could provide, if we pass this contract today, the flexibility to not come back to the board when we approve these services up to 100K? Did I even pose the question adequately?
You posed it adequately. And yes, it is, but however, Stephen Carter's here if you have any additional questions.
Go ahead, Stephen.
So let me just do briefly what I know about this scenario. This was definitely done under Anita and via the purchasing policy and from the legal perspective, that it was well within our ability, if the board approved, to have a master agreement for these very specific transactions that are on a very time-sensitive nature to where that agreement is what agreement they would always send to the vendor to sign with very specific changes that they agree upon ahead, like a quick RFQ. And the master agreement is one that the board has basically, let's say, blessed and given up to so much allowance and allows the DSS department to go into those specific agreements quickly. And under Anita, that was well within all of the rules.
Lloyd?
Yes, so it is, it is contemplated in our office that as part of the recommendations, and perhaps Deputy Director Davis can speak to this, that there would be a request for qualifications process that would be consistent with the county's purchasing ordinance and/or consultant selection policy prior to the entering of, that would utilize the master, the proposed master contract template, but that RFQ essentially would take the place of what would usually be or normally be the RFP process under the county's purchasing ordinance. But there would be a process nonetheless for obtaining qualified contractors through this RFQ process.
Hundred percent agree.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So Amber, we're talking about people here who really need services. And can you just explain to us maybe some of the situations that have caused the need for this?
Well, there's two different types of individuals that we tend to help in wraparound services. The first, you may know about our local county contract that we have with RCS for wraparound services. And generally, what we will do is refer our family to them when we are afraid that the needs of that family is so great, that they need some extra support, and it's our attempt to either prevent them from coming into childcare, or if they already are, to maintain that process. So we don't have a child or a youth going from one home to the next to the next.
Amber, can you speak a little louder? We're having a hard time hearing you.
It would help if I put this down again. The goal is, of course, to support these families in a way that we can prevent any kind of disruption in the placement of that child. The other side of the spectrum is that sometimes we do have to have a child placed out of home, and sometimes it has to be on a higher level placement, such as a short-term therapeutic and STRTP placement. But there's a current, we are thankful for this federal law that went into effect, that requires us to immediately start wraparound services for any youth that's stepping down from an STRTP. Because of course, they're in an area that everything is focused, and they have a lot of people involved, and they're receiving a lot of services. And so you can't expect everything to be perfect when they go from there back to a lower level of care. You have to provide more services for them, not just legally, but ethically, to help that family stay focused. So those are kind of the two sides of the spectrums of individuals and families that we help with wraparound services. I will say that right now, we only have for youth and an STRTP. And we are working, of course, as always, to try to bring them out at that higher level of care. So this is not a contract where we're going to have 50 or 60 different contracts under. We may have five or six children who are placed out of county, who may need these services, that we can't use our local vendor, and we have a few that are placed out of county because we have no STRTPs in Lake County that will need them when they come back home or when they go back to the relative that they're going to live with. So just, I don't know if that matters to any of you board members, but it is a contract that would be extremely beneficial for our more complex youth and their families and caregivers. And it, you know, luckily, right now, and hopefully, we will maintain that, it is not for a large number of people.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
So outside of the, my opinion that we should be looking this more in a holistic thing, I'm looking specifically at the contract, and Supervisor Green brought some idea in my head, that there's not a definition of wraparound services or STRP within the contract. So it really doesn't, in my opinion, limit what this could be for. I hear wraparound services all the time for so many different things. And the fact that this is specific to STRP, but it's not provided in the description of services under the scope of services, I think is, should be a requirement that it's in there. That way, it limits it to the specifics of what you're requesting us to approve. And I think that that might make it a little bit more comfortable and safe to move forward with that, because it really does not denote STRP whatsoever that I can see within the scope of services.
Absolutely, we can make those changes.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, so I agree some definition is helpful, but to the point of short-term residential treatment programs or STRTPs in particular, this contract doesn't cover STRTPs, it covers wraparound lower than an STRTP-level placement. Is that correct?
Right. Wraparound services aren't actually the funds for the placement themselves, it's the funds for the supportive services of wrapping around that youth once they step down from an STRTP, or of course, the other side of the spectrum, trying to prevent them from going into a higher level of care.
Okay. So for that clarification, this contract, we're not talking about STRTP funding, but to use that as a potential example to Supervisor Sabatier's concern, if we were to bring back a master contract idea for STRTP placements, whoa, great idea, because those are going to be pricey, and because those can be time-sensitive, those can be very urgent. So I just want to highlight that as, if we move ahead with this master contract today just for wraparound services, great idea, and then we may have a choice moving forward. If it's a great idea today, then maybe there will be some mission creep, and maybe we will see Social Services and BH come back with some additional ideas for master contracts. I think that'd be okay, because then we get to have that kind of issue-oriented or theme-oriented discussion about what a proper latitude is for a department head to grant a contract. And it may also be the cleaner thing as far as putting out RFQs for providers. So thank you for the clarification. These wraparound services are important, not just for kiddos stepping up into the system, but for those stepping down from those very high-needs residential placements. I'm in support of it.
Stephen?
So Supervisor Green actually brought up a good point, which I don't know since I was working at the same time, that was brought up earlier, that this was actually, in our mind, considered a pilot for possible to see how it functions, the master agreement concept here, because it is in LA and other counties. And if it is successful, then yes, we were potentially going to expand it to other services like Supervisor Green suggested.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comment? Supervisor Spatier?
So I know that currently, and I haven't done a whole lot of work, but I've initiated conversation with both county council and the admin office about reviewing our purchasing ordinance again, as well as, and involved in that would be potentially increasing our maximum amounts. I really think that solves much more than just the one problem that is before us today, looking to see if there is support of continuing that, just because I think it's an opportunity to at least kind of put the finger in the wind.
For other departments, yeah?
Because I think that for our purchasing ordinance, if we have the ability to increase that to 50,000 instead of 25,000, again, that helps for the maximum if we, and again, I'm using 50,000, that doesn't have to be the stopgap. I think we need to look at what other counties have as their maximums, and look at the comparisons of different counties' population and amounts of our budget, so on and so forth. I just think that this is a much more exhaustive problem than just this specific program that's being discussed.
Okay, yeah, I think we can bring that back, but let's stay on this contract.
I was just asking for.
Yeah.
Think you got three?
Yeah. So this, this master contract, Stephen, you've mentioned that this is pretty standard for some other counties. Do we know, like, can you talk, speak a little bit more about, you said LA County? What other counties?
Well, I would have to do some research specifically on that, but when Anita and I were going over it, it's LA County has this quite a bit for social services, they might even have it for Baber Health, but I don't have enough background to give you good, great detail, other than I know for a fact, big counties like that use it. I could come back with that information, but I don't have that on me, other than the LA and a couple other counties for sure.
Okay, well, that's fine. Thank you.
And their agreement, by the way, is like 200 pages long, because it was the guide.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have public comment? Not seeing anybody, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
There's nothing further. I move to approve the wraparound master contract, allowing the department head or designee for Lake County Department of Social Services the ability to negotiate and authorize compensation with any qualifying service provider through the RFQ process for wraparound services in an amount between $25,000 and $100,000 per fiscal year for the time period of fiscal year 23, 24 through fiscal year 25, 26, without prior board approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, motion passes. Thank you. So we've just got calendars, and we have Dr. Duhon coming at 1:30. Do we want to do calendars now, or do we want to do them later?
Oh, you want to do it later.
Okay. And we will come back, we'll come back at 1:40, give everyone just about an hour, and then we'll do 7.1 after we do our 6.9 item. All right, thank you. All right, there we are. Okay, welcome back. Our next item is 6.9, 1:30 p.m. Administer the ceremonial oath of office to Public Health Officer Dr. Noah M. C. Duhon, MP, Ph.D., MPH. CIO Parker.
Good afternoon, Dr. Duhon. It's my great pleasure to give you your oath. Raise your right hand, please. Am I talking, okay. I, state your name.
I, Noah M. C. Duhon.
This is Mike on Sam?
Yes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Of health officer in and for the County of Lake.
Of health officer in and for the County of Lake.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Yep.
How we doing in the photo?
Does everybody want to be in the photo?
We're coming down there?
Betty, come down.
Ah, much better. Okay, he's happy now. Okay. One more. Great, thank you.
Thank you. No second, yeah. Thank you.
There's no crisis?
Well, not yet.
Yeah. We do need, we have a right to work. We're so excited to have you, Dr. Duhon. It has been a long time since we've had a permanent PHO, and, you know, we're excited to have you. You have all this experience in rural counties like ours, in our neighboring county, and with the Rancho. So we're just, we're looking forward to some fresh, bright new times. So I don't know.
Dr. Duhan, you need to go and to the admin office and sign your...
Well, not yet, yeah, we do need, we have a right to work, we're so excited to have you, Dr. Duhan, it has been a long time since we've had a permanent PHO, and you know, we're excited to have you, you have all this experience in rural counties like ours, in our neighboring county, and with the Rancho, so we're just, we're looking forward to some fresh, bright new times, so I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to say to people in the room, or to the public, but you can grab that microphone and go for it.
Thank you, I'm really honored to take this position, I, my vision is that there will never be an absence in this role moving forward, that from now on, you'll always have a health officer, that I will be in this role, and then after me, you will have a long succession of health officers to serve Lake County, this is such a beautiful and great county, there's a lot of hard work to do, but there's a great team here at the county and in the community to do it, so I'm really, I'm really eager to, I started on September 1st, so eager to keep working for you, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, any other comments from the board?
Welcome to the, welcome to the team, thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to, in one sense, it's routine when we do the oath of office, but when I hear the words, and I heard you speak them today, I know you take them to heart, and I know 99.99% of us do, all the more reason, it was beautiful to me to hear those words, knowing that there is a full commitment to that, and although that is not universally held by everyone who takes an oath similar to that, it's all the more notable that you took those words freely and will flee, and that you're going to serve the people here, as we all swore oaths to do, so that stood out to me, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Just want to say welcome, and we're here to support your helping move forward to make our community a better place, so thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Anyone in the public, either in the chambers or in the Zoom room, and Matthew, I don't have the Zoom up right now, if there's any hands up, would you let me know, please? Nope? Okay, good.
There are no hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much, thank you, Dr. Duhan. Okay, we have just a few items to get through before we end our open session, we have 7.7, are we ready for this now? I'm, I'm sorry, not 7.7, 5.14. Okay, 5.14, approve amendment number three to the agreement between the County of Lake, Lake County Behavioral Health Services as lead administrative entity for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Sunrise Special Services Foundation, with no change to the contract maximum for fiscal years 2022 to 2023, 2023 to 2024, and authorize the board chair to sign, and we've got Director Jones here, I can't remember who pulled this. Oh, you did, okay, I'll turn it over first.
I just pulled it to vote on it outside of the consent agenda, basically.
Okay.
Unless you want to elaborate more, but I just, I know what it's about, I think we all do, but I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, well, we did a separate vote, rather.
A separate vote, okay, did you want to speak to the item?
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is not a change to that contract maximum, we worked with Sunrise to make sure that what they were billing and doing actually matched the budget, as that's been an issue, and so we, this is corrective in terms of those issues, and I can announce, because it is germane to the topic of sheltering, this contract is for sheltering services, that the Lake County Continuum of Care voted, and their executive committee voted to award a new contract for these sheltering services to Redwood Community Services, and so Redwood Community Services will be working closely with Behavioral Health and Sunrise to transition over the provision of those sheltering services, so this contract amendment should see us through till that transition takes effect.
Do we have a timeline for that?
We're developing it, I know that we've requested to meet this week with Redwood, and also Redwood and Sunrise together to talk about that with them, and how fast, you know, we can really scale, how they can scale up and take over that, so I hope to provide an update maybe even as soon as next week, although Supervisor Sabatier may actually know more than me.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I definitely would not say I know more than you, but I do know that the contract ends on October 24th, and so we're just looking to see what RCS's timeline is, there may need to be a small extension just to make sure that we can meet their needs, so that they can get started with their feet running.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Supervisor Green?
Just to clarify, the, the grant award recommendation was made Monday.
That's correct.
And there's still an appeal period to run.
That is correct.
Thank you, I'm very supportive of this amendment, it does not change anything to the dollar amount, and it does bring us into better compliance as far as informing the public what's happening with the current contract, so I'm very supportive of this.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just to go into some of the details, and I don't have it right in front of me, so I'll just go off the top of the head, but I know that we saw a reduction in the amount used per month for food, and that's because of the extra relationship with Redwood Empire Food Bank, which helps to decrease the costs, there is a, in my opinion, a slight increase in the overhead administrative costs, but at this moment, and I just want to make that public, and so that everyone's aware, at this point, that doesn't reduce the service of the amount of beds that are available, and the people that can be served, and because of the fact that we're in that soon-to-be transition state into what hopefully will be RCS, we will see what happens, it still needs to go through a couple hurdles, that I'm perfectly fine with moving forward, knowing that there's a, there's a change in the future.
Supervisor Crandall?
With that in mind, the HMIS staff, is there a reason why it went from like 500 to 3360? I mean, I know it's their budget, but for the last two or three, it's been consistent with 5, 8, and now it's at 3300, so.
I will let Director Jones respond, though I could.
I believe it was just simply inaccurate, and so they had to correct that to actually reflect what they were spending in terms of staffing, so they, yes.
I don't remember Jordan's last name, but Jordan is the woman that works in that position, and the amount of work that's required is definitely a full-time job, so that number did not surprise me, it is different than before, but I think it's definitely more accurate, what I appreciate is our last contract amendment, we said anything that is 10% different within each light item of the budget needs to be brought to the Board of Supervisors for approval, and this is why we have what we have in front of us, since those changes are being made.
Okay, do we have anything from the public? I don't, yeah, come on up, you can come up to the microphone, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Nancy, and I'm from San Diego, California, a few months back, I'm actually probably one of your newest members of your community, and I'm here to talk about the shelter, because I came up here with high hopes of retiring up here with my best friend, who did me so dirty, I'm not going to even go into it, I ended up being penniless after coming up here with enough money, buying a van and coming up here with enough money to survive, basically, when my money was gone, I was gone, she threw me out, I didn't know where I was, and the only reason why I found Lake County is because I went to Health and Human Services, and the Housing Commission, and several other places, looking for any kind of help, I was out of gas, in Social Security's parking lot, not knowing what I was going to do, but I thought for sure they would help me, because I have guaranteed income from them, survivor benefits, but I was very surprised when I got there, and he said, "I feel so bad about what happened to you, but we are not a bank, and we can't do anything to help you," I still had a whole month to go before I got another check, I was on E, and I had myself and the dog in the car, and was told I was going to be towed in the morning, with everything I owned in it, so get whatever I could carry, and the dog, and get out of the van, and then the man at Social Security made a phone call, and a girl called me back within the hour, she called me back in 35 minutes, she was there within 45 minutes, put $15 of her own money in my gas tank, told me to follow her, and took me to that shelter, where, I'm sorry, I'm emotional, but where I have been very safe ever since, and my dog is comfortable as well, it was 110 degrees outside, and I don't know what politics you have going on with the shelter or anything else, all I can tell you is that that girl has heart, and she came, and she rescued me, so I wanted to come today to tell you what the shelter meant to me, and really, I'm sure to a lot of other people that are new to your county, I wanted to come up here and retire because it's so beautiful, and I had nothing but a domino effect of bad things happening, and I'm still hopeful, and I'm still positive, that I'm going to get some type of help or something from somewhere, to help me find someplace to retire up here comfortably, maybe not happily, but content, you know, just me and my dog, and I wanted to say thank you for letting me talk, I probably didn't say half of what I wanted to say, but I thank you for listening to me, the shelter has definitely helped me, I would be on the street, probably dead, with my dog probably dead, on Hamburger Hill, you know, I can't believe I know that name right now, but that's where I was stuck, and nobody could help me, not Social Security, nobody, but the shelter came and helped me, and I've been a productive member of society all my life, I've never been homeless, I've worked, I've made $120,000 a year, I've worked, run Home Depots, and Price Clubs, Costco's, I was the highest-paid female in my field, now here I am, homeless, in Northern California, and the only people that were willing to help me was that shelter, so I don't know what they do right, or what they do wrong, but they sure saved me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, and Nicole was the one that came out, saved me.
Thank you so much. If you would like to come up to the microphone, you can have three minutes, would you like to respond?
I just want to clarify that this, the shelter, it was our intention and plan to continue the sheltering service in perpetuity, and so what we're discussing isn't whether or not there will be a shelter, but who will run it.
That's fine, and, and that's politics, and you guys know more than I do, I just wanted to let you know what she did for me, or they did for me.
Thank you, thank you, okay, you're going to have your three minutes now?
Yes, I'm also homeless, six months now, I just came up here to get, move into a home, long story short, it turned out to be a slumlord, slum situation, and I have been homeless ever since, when I decided that toilets and other things were not being fixed and repaired, and when I said I do not want to pay anymore, I went to Walmart, come back, and all blocks are changed, so I've been illegally evicted, six months now, and I am suing him for half a million dollars, president to something that happened in Kansas, almost same situation, but I'm here to talk about the shelter, it's definitely needed, there are too many people walking up and down the street that need a place, unfortunately, what she's speaking of, Nicole, Nicole has and is a user, and at the same time, she has been threatening and harassing the homeless in the past week or so, maybe because of the pressure of whether or not they were going to get the contract again or not, I myself needed to go to surgery, travel help, next day to Sutter, I come back three days, they said it was a two-day, next thing you know, my room is gone, I've had for six months, it's some retaliation, because as a volunteer staff member, I decided I could not do that anymore, especially when they took the power away, you were speaking of administrative costs going up, well, I don't know how that can go up when there's only less than three people now running the place, and they're not there half the time, they, they just take off for two hours or so, and nobody's running the place, from what I understand, just the other night, I have not been back there, but the kitchens are wide open now, people can go in, you've got men and so forth who go in and grab knives, you have the women who are scared, I've had women coming to me just the other day over at the Native Minds, crying on my shoulder, about this, scared about this, they're scared about that, she has been harassing those at the homeless shelter, so I'm very glad to hear that RCS is going to be taking over, because they need businessmen and businesswomen running this place, not users, not ex-users, it needs to be run like a business, I've managed major department stores in Los Angeles for many years, with 20 and 30 employees, I've never seen anything run like this this year, she has gone, and Taylor and Jerry have gone, and they favor those who are using the drugs, they favor those, that someone using drugs, doing meth in the place, or doing, smoking weed, it's okay, and then it's not okay, you've got people who are trying to get off the stuff, you have people who are looking to, who don't use drugs, and legitimately homeless, they need a safe haven, and that place is no longer a safe haven, not at all, for anyone, I don't want to even go back there, because I'm, I was a smoker for 40 years, I was allergic to, I'm allergic now to cigarettes, cigars, I guess it's like...
Yeah, that's your time.
And, and so, make a long story short, they put me onto a room full of...
Okay, thank you, your time is up, thank you so much. Okay, do we have anyone else? Okay, we'll close public, we don't have anyone in Zoom, do we, Wendy? Okay, close public comment, and bring it back to the board for action.
I'd like to thank all the speakers here today, and acknowledge concerns, what a wonderful first start this is to interim sheltering, and all the difficulties that go with that, budgetary, political, staffing, all that, we've got some good news today about where we're headed, but the even better news today is that we have, through support from the community and through our continuum of care, established proof of concept for the first go-round of the shelter, and now we're moving ahead to get towards Shelter 2.0, or whatever we want to call it, in the meantime, I move to approve amendment number three to the agreement between the County of Lake, Lake County Behavioral Health Services as the lead administrative entity for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Sunrise Special Services Foundation, with no change to the contract maximum for fiscal years 2022, '23, 2023, '24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just as a request and question, I know last time, we had some public comments, I reached out to you to see if there was any, anything that needed to be done within the facility, I'm going to ask, and with consensus from the board, if we can take a look at that again, just to make sure with the new comments that we've received, I don't like hearing comments without necessarily taking a look and making sure that those comments are either correct or incorrect, so if the rest of the board is okay with that request, that would be my request.
Yes, consensus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we just have...
Can I follow up their request with another request, so operationally, absolutely, we need to took a look at that, one thing I've struggled with this current contract, and we're going to be scoping a new contract for the next provider, is where the county's responsibility ends as the building operator and owner, there's some things that fall in the middle of that, like HVAC filters and stuff like that, that are kind of high-ticket items, but not necessarily on the to-do list for what the vendor's going to be, or not maybe high on the list for what the county wants to do, and, and that's maybe a consensus item in scoping the next contract, but if, if there were any faults in this contract, it was like the barest, the bare bones, the staffing and stuff like that, but I don't know for a fact that we successfully navigated what was going to be on the county's hook, and of course, the county doesn't want to put a lot of money into an old derelict building, but we don't want to have an old derelict building with no maintenance attached to it, so what level of contract involvement, where they take some share of the maintenance, but what share the, the county is going to do in support of this operation, so I don't know if I phrased that adequately, but...
Sounds like that's going to be...
I can, I can respond to that in the sense that that was added to the contract, as that was missing at one point, and that can always be adjusted or reviewed at the next iteration of the contract, for sure, because I know that Director Ewing was involved in making sure that the language was appropriately added into the contract.
Thank you.
And just real quick, Director Jones, I really appreciate you and Stephen Carter for the work you've brought this forward on, I think it's a lot more clarity and a lot more moving forward, so I really just wanted to say thank you for that, and Stephen as well, I know you're listening.
Sitting in there.
Thanks.
Okay, our last public item is calendars, did I miss anything? Okay.
I don't know, there's too much.
Who would like to go first?
I got mine up, so I'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
Okay, board meeting today, tomorrow, I got a meeting, I, two meetings, so I'm going to be meeting with a couple of, one business and one other elected official, Thursday, Blue Ribbon Committee, South Deal, I may need to juggle those some way, shape, or form?
I'm going to go to South Deal Committee, so if you go to the Blue Ribbon, I'll go to...
Because yeah, I think Blue Ribbon's in Ukiah, right, this time, or is it, oh, it's here, oh, that's Lakeport, that's right, yeah.
So let me, if there's something you need with South Deal, just let me know.
There is, I'll get them to you today.
Okay.
And so there's that, Friday, we have the CDPH meeting, right, and then Monday, CAO meeting, Russian River Water Forum, my FRRC, which is the Farm Ranch Rural Committee for EPA, and then I have a meeting with PG&E to discuss the new Long Valley and old Long Valley work, and then back here Tuesday.
Go for it.
All right, tomorrow, starting the day off in Lakeport with the LTA APC meeting, why does it say Clear Lake Senior Center at the bottom, I guess I'm at this... I guess I'm at this, I'll figure out where I'm supposed to be tomorrow. Do you know where the meeting is at?
The Senior Center.
Is it the Senior Center?
That's what I saw.
Okay, for some reason I have both Lakeport and Senior Center on there, so, oh, that's because City Hall is under renovations. That's right. Then I will see if I can pass by the Children's Council. It's been a while since I have dropped by. Later on, I have some constituents that Chair Piska so kindly requested I meet with, that I will be meeting with. They are business entrepreneurs from out of the Bay Area who would like to learn more about Lake County, and so I'll be meeting with them. Just want to make sure you know I followed up.
Are you going to their house?
I followed up.
They invited me to their house.
No, I know why, I know why you sent it this way. And I'll start my Thursday off at Judge's Breakfast. Then I will be joining Hope Rising for the CHIP meeting as we continue with our Community Health Improvement Plan. And then there's an issue that's been kind of bubbling, hasn't really hit any negativity yet, but it's making people nervous, and that's our redemption recycling centers unavailable in certain areas. If you don't have a redemption center within, I think it's supposed to be half a mile, I think, of a grocery store, that a grocery store is supposed to offer their own redemption at the grocery store. And our grocery stores are just not equipped to handle that kind of refund and collecting of recycling material. So working with our local hauler, our waste hauler, and our local landfill director, Lars Ewing, as well as the City of Clear Lake to figure out where we might put a mobile recycling redemption center. We are jumping on a pilot program that is happening at Fort Bragg. Those same conversations eventually will leak over to Lakeport for the fact that they are next on the list for the state of California to start going after the grocery stores for not having their own redemption center. There is a fine of $100 a day to grocery stores who do not do this. So we're trying to resolve this before the fines start happening. Clear Lake was first on the list. Lakeport will be next, unfortunately. And currently, correct me if I'm wrong, I know Robinson Rancheria still runs a redemption center. Did I hear correct that Twin Pine is also running one?
It's Twin Pine, no S.
Did I say S? I thought I held back on that.
Every time.
Just keep calling me Clear Lakes.
Yeah, so, I'll just call you Highlands. So we've had initial conversations with Lars and yeah, we're working on something.
Okay, so I heard something through the grapevine and that was correct, okay. But something that we need to figure out and so happy to be a part of the conversation, based on the direction of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Crandall, myself, will be meeting with CDPH in regard to the Syringe Exchange Program decision that was made. And then later on, on Friday, it will...
Is Dr. Duhon going to be with you?
I believe. I sent out an invitation to everybody. I'll have to figure out if I emailed before she got an email address or after, so thank you for that question. On the next one, yes, Dr. Duhon is invited to our ambulance ordinance review. A bunch of folks from the EMCC are getting together and taking a look to see what changes are necessary. There are certain upcoming changes that may be coming down the pike, and those changes are not within the realm of possibility in the current state of our ambulance ordinance. On Monday, meeting with Meadow Lake Farm Food Hub, Meadow Lake Farm Food Hub and our CAO and getting prepared for our meeting on Monday, on Tuesday, the 19th.
Who's ready down here?
Finished the meeting today, got LTA tomorrow, agenda review. I heard that will be talked about, maybe something later on today or something.
Today, yeah.
Okay, so, and then after the LTA APC meeting, we have the Executive Board meeting. I'm on the Executive Board. We'll have a meeting following that tomorrow. Thursday, the South Deal meeting. EJ, please let me know. Blue Ribbon, I'll do the South Deal Committee meeting. If there's anything needs to jump on there, please let me know that in your area. I know you've got some projects over there by Blue Lakes that you've been talking about for...
Blue Lakes in the now Spring Valley.
Oh, okay.
Wait, that's not Kelsey, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, yeah. And then math, Thursday evening. Friday morning, have the Workforce Alliance in North Bay meeting. Need to get that completed. Friday night, have, you know, all of Lake County's got some football going on. Saturday, we have our Indian Day celebration we do every year at Twin Pine. And then Sunday...
Snuck up.
Yeah. What's that?
No, sorry.
He sneezed.
Oh, okay. And then Sunday, starting out a project with the Middletown Arts Center, having a community meeting. We got a grant in coordination with Caliomi, Middletown Arts Center and Middletown Rancheria to paint the water, not the water towers.
Rabbit Hill?
Yeah, Rabbit Hill. The two water tanks up there is water baskets, kind of as a landing acknowledgement and a tribal acknowledgement. Really cool project that's been going on, so excited for that kickoff meeting to happen Sunday. And then Monday, back here for the RRA meeting. Seems like our agenda's getting a little big, but you know, hopefully manage it.
We should probably talk about that.
The best that we can. And you know, continue that on. Then back here Tuesday, obviously, it looks like our agenda is really filling up and we've got a nice meeting on Tuesday, it looks like.
Over here, it seems...
Robinson and Middletown have the same, yeah, Indian Days celebrations, so it's back and, back and forth for some of the dancers. But yeah, Robinson's having theirs as well Saturday.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, it looks like I will also take a stab at getting the Children's Council tomorrow. I also plan to attend Lakeport Planning Commission tomorrow evening. They're going to be taking another look at a parklet proposal for Main Street. Also plan on attending Blue Ribbon Committee, just because they're coming to town and it would be rude not to say hello and catch up on all things Blue Ribbon. I haven't scheduled anything yet, but I'm hoping to reach out to one or two fire personnel. I have been working to repopulate our Emergency Medical Care Committee. Hopefully, we're going to get some applications on the pipeline and get a quorum. My ears did perk up at news that we're going to be kicking the tires on the ambulance ordinance that falls squarely within the realm of the committee's authority. So it's important to do both. We've got to get the committee up and running and if we are going to open those things up, there's different ways we can do it. So I'll speak with you offline about that. Supervisor Sabatier. That looks pretty light after that. Yeah, looks pretty good. Thank you.
Okay, I have quite a bit for a report out on the last couple of weeks and this, the rest of this month are a lot of travel. I did attend the Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force meeting in person on the 29th in It's just a really great opportunity to reconnect with our OES partners. Jay-Z Hyde, who was with OES and who, who brought us the Climate Resiliency Officer Grant and the Home Hardening Grant, is now the Executive Director of the State Fire Safe Council, which is awesome because she's continuing to help us get more and more grants in here. And it's really good to see her. She had, she gave an excellent presentation. And then on the 31st, we hosted the CPUC. We had, well, they had their voting meeting here in our chambers for several hours the afternoon of the 31st, and then we had the opportunity to sit down with commissioners and talk about local issues. Then I went to the Blue Ribbon Committee for the fair, fair kickoff. Fair was incredible. I want to give a huge shout out to all of our law enforcement partners. Commander Fanzler requested enforcement from the cities and also in collaboration with our sheriff and probation and ABC, and there were even state park rangers out there. It was a bit of a wild time, but I'm really glad that we had as much coverage as we did. And all of those partners worked so hard. The kids, there's quite a few animals that did not make weight. If anyone is looking for an underweight fair animal, there are a lot of available. Many pigs didn't make weight. There's lots of extra turkeys. If anybody wants an animal, let me know. I could probably connect you. I've already got a turkey on the way and possibly a pig. Anyways, great, great week of the fair. And I just love seeing those kids and how hard they work and the lessons that they learn with all the program we have with 4H and FFA. Oh, and I didn't report on the Blackberry Cobbler Festival. Again, huge hit. Probably close to 3,000 people came to the Cobb area. So that has become a wonderful tradition for the area and really important to the local nonprofits and community groups that are now relying on that festival to bring Then I went to Sacramento on the 6th. Right, no, the 6th, we, I had a meeting with the Governor's Office and OPR about forest biomass utilization. Still trying to kind of elbow our way into the pilot programs that are operating around the state. There's, I think, four or five, and we continue to be left out of those. So trying to hustle some funding to get our own biomass utilization plan going here. Then I went to Sacramento for the CPUC workshop. That was all day. And that was looking at, looking at the enforcement, or looking at the pots, plain old telephone lines and cell service and VoIP and broadband. And Matthew and I were invited to speak along with another tribal person and a representative from Inyo County. They wanted local government and tribal perspectives on what enforcement looks like for the new policies and if they should be changed. And that was a very long contentious day with conversations with the carriers and their interpretation of what adequate coverage looks like. And so I just really want to say that Matthew was incredible. He is really stepping up into his new role with, as Legislative Affairs Liaison and, and really lent so much to that conversation and tempered me. And the next day, we met with PG&E, with RCRC and CSAC. And again, Matthew was on point, incredible. But really disappointing, as Supervisor Crandall can attest, because all three of us were there, is that we are having the same conversation that we have been having for over two years. And it's mind-boggling that we're still doing this and we're stuck in this loop with PG&E, but we're just going to keep being relentless with what it is we need. And they're hearing us. And it sounds like we're going to have some local tours.
That's right, yeah. And I forgot to mention that in mind because I just went straight into next week. But yeah, I've been, we have been saying that, the same things to them for the past months. And so, I was like, I just threw out some options, like here, maybe you could do this. Maybe you can keep the data. Maybe you can hire someone and collect the data so we can tell the people that are complaining to us about this, that this is where they're at or this is where they're not at and this is why, rather than waiting for them to update us.
Yeah, that was our big request, is show us the data. Show us, you know, you've got your different programs, you've been to all these properties, but how do we even know which properties have been cleaned up? What's, you know, there's just a real lack of data to, for us to understand the strategy and hold them accountable. So again, same conversation, different day, who knows? We're going to keep having those meetings, though. And tomorrow, agenda review, we're going to hit later today because I do have to be on the fourth floor. And then Thursday, I have the Fire Safe Council meeting. I have a follow-up meeting with OPR about the APGP grant in Climate Safe Lake. And then CWDG discussion for that next round of grant funding with our partners, Clerk and Tara and NCO and our fire departments. And then Friday, Workforce Alliance Governing Board meeting. I'm going to be here at Career Point.
I'm going to be doing it down. I sent them an address.
You're going to Napa?
No, I'm going to Zoom in.
You're going to do your Zoom there, okay. Then the Soda Bay Corridor Evacuation Route Planning Meeting, which we're having every other week right now. And our community meeting, which is going, very exciting, is going to be on this 25th of September, so we're working towards that event. And our food bank meeting has been canceled, correct? Okay.
Working on it.
Yes. Okay, the Wine Alliance Dinner is Saturday night. We are in full swing with festivals, the Fall Festivals, and all the parties are happening right now. So I'll be at the Wine Alliance Saturday night. And then Monday is the Risk Reduction Authority after my weekly meeting with CAO Parker. And then also, I have to say, Sunday was the Dia de Independencia celebration in Kelsoville. I want to say it was the fourth, third or fourth event. And it is such a beautiful event. And it has just quickly become one of the most beloved events of the season. And the folklorical dances and the horses and the food, it was just an incredible celebration. And I hope you all can make it one day. And that is all my updates. So we are at the end of our open session meetings. We have two closed session items. 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. And E1, Two Potential Cases. And 8.2, Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal, Release. So thank you for joining us today and we are now going to move into closed session. Was there any action taken out of closed session?
Yes, there was. Madam Chair, there's two actions that need to be taken. I would like to move to terminate Health Services Director Jonathan Portney effective immediately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Also have a second motion. I move to appoint Susan Parker as interim Health Services Director immediately.
Second.
I added that there, but immediately.
I thought that was a question mark.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes and this meeting is adjourned.